Well, good afternoon and welcome to the National Capital Planning Commission's October 6, 2022 open session. First, Ms. Costa, can you please take the role?
Certainly. Commissioner Cozart?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon?
I'm here.
You. Commissioner May?
I am here.
Thank you. Commissioner Argo?
I'm here.
Thank you. Chair White?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Dixon?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Thank you. And Commissioner Ginsburg?
Here.
I'll note that Marcel Acosta, the Executive Director, Anne Skyler, the General Counsel, and Diane Sullivan, Director of the Urban Design and Plan Review Division, are also in the meeting.
Noting the presence of a quorum, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today's meeting is livestreamed and will be available in a few days as a video on NCPC's website. If there's no objection, the agenda as posted is adopted as the order of business. We will now play a short video clip of the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of the British Isles, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
NCPC will continue to conduct its meetings online until renovations on the commission chamber are complete. We also are continuing to monitor public health requirements for in-person gatherings. I want to share how we will be conducting commission business. During commission deliberations, I will use a round robin format to ask each commissioner if they have any questions. As a reminder, during deliberations, all commissioners should be on video during that time unless you are experiencing technical issues. At other times, when commissioners wish to be recognized, they should unmute and ask to be recognized. Next, Agenda Item 2 is the Report of the Chair. Following our discussion at last month's commission meeting, I sent comments to Lonnie Bunch, Secretary of the Smithsonian Institution, on the new museum site selection study. I also want to note that Thomas Muir, a commission alternate for the Secretary of the Department of Defense, has retired, and we all at NCPC want to wish him well in his retirement. Agenda Item 3 is the Report of the Executive Director, Mr. Acosta.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon. Last Friday, NCPC's Comprehensive Plant Transportation Element received the American Planning Association's National Capital Chapter's Plenary Excellence Award in Sustainability and Resilience. Our congratulations to Joanna McCran, Mike Wild, and Kell Anderson for their outstanding work. I also have some personnel announcements. Solomon Gosay, our longtime IT contractor, has been a vital part of the NCPT for nearly 14 years. He is taking a new position within his company as a field network engineer. Thanks to Solomon for supporting our staff's IT needs and our virtual commission meetings. We also say farewell to urban planner Garrett Wolf, who recently left the agency's physical planning division for a new opportunity in the private sector. We thank Garrett for his contribution to the Monumental Core Streetscape Battle and Pennsylvania Avenue Initiative. Finally, Patricia Thompson, NCPC's longtime front desk receptionist and administrative assistant, is retiring after 14 years. Will certainly miss her friendly demeanor and candy attitude. So congratulations to Patricia on her well-deserved retirement, and we do wish her all the best. That concludes my presentation, and I do have a written report in your packets, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Acosta. Does the commission have any questions of Mr. Acosta? Commissioner May?
Not a question, but I wanted to comment because I, you know, was really looking forward to the day when we might actually come back to the office and come back to, you know, being in person, and we would once again be greeted by Patricia when we walked in the door. And it's sad that we won't have that moment, and I want to make sure, I don't know that she is listening to this, but I want to make sure that she knows that she will be sorely missed. I'm, I, I don't know, we've gotten along, I guess, for a couple of years without her, but man, you know, nothing like being greeted by Patricia when you come in. So sorry to hear that, but again, well-deserved retirement.
I second that, and I would like if you can share her home address with us so we could give her at least a written send-off. I would love to send her a note. She's, she's one of a kind.
Me too.
We'll certainly do that, and I'm sure she'll be happy to hear from you, and we'll appreciate your good wishes.
Hearing no other comment, I would like to add, I think we all echo the sentiments about Patricia. The greetings were always warm, and, and thank you too to Solomon and Garrett for your service, and we wish you well in your next adventures. And to Solomon, I appreciate your patience with all of my technological questions and challenges. So we greatly appreciate the support. And I just want to also offer congratulations to the team for the recognition of the work. And that's a very prestigious award, and it's very important work that you do every day, and it's always nice to see that recognized, especially by your planning peers. So congratulations to our very talented staff. Agenda Item 4 is the Legislative Update. We'll be hearing from Ms. Skyler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of things to report, and I do apologize. It appears someone's using a leaf blower next door, and it might be a little interference. The first item I'd like to report on is HR 6353, which is the National Service Animals Memorial Act. The bill authorizes the National Service Animals Monument Corporation to establish a commemorative work on federal land in the District of Columbia in accordance with the Commemorative Works Act to commemorate the historic deeds and sacrifices of service animals and handlers of service animals in the United States. The bill passed the House of Representatives on September 19th, and it was received in the Senate on September 20th, where it was referred to the Commission on Energy and National Resources. The next item I would like to report on is Senate Bill 2077. This bill directs the President to establish a bipartisan commission to study the establishment of a national museum of the American people, to recount the history of all groups of people who came to the United States or are indigenous to the United States, and the contributions of those people to the United States. The bill was introduced in the Senate on June 16th and referred to the Committee on Energy and Natural Resources. Of note is a provision in the bill which requires possible locations for museums in Washington DC and its environs to be considered in consultation with the National Capital Planning Commission, the Commission of Fine Arts, and the National Park Service. And now I'd like to just make reference to one more bill that was introduced earlier this week, and it has been in the press, so at least you think I'm not attending to my duties. The bill in question is called the LGBTQ+. It was introduced early in the week, but the text is not available yet from the government printing office, so I will be reporting on it next month. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions for Ms. Skyler? Thank you for the thorough report. Hearing no questions. We will move on to Agenda Item 5, which is the Consent Calendar. There's one item on the consent calendar. It is for the approval of preliminary and final site development plans for rehabilitation of the George Washington Memorial Parkway North in Virginia. This project was submitted by the National Park Service. Are there any questions or discussion on the consent calendar items? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll move up to approval.
Thank you. Commissioner Argo, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner May. Ms. Costa, can you please confirm the motion in the second and take the vote by real call?
Certainly. Commissioner Argo made the motion. Commissioner May made the second. And with that, Commissioner Cozart?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Chair White?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
Epstein.
Okay. And Commissioner Ginsburg?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. The motion is carried. Agenda Item 6A is a request to approve final site development plans for the 11th Street Bridge Park, and I believe we'll be hearing from Ms. Hair.
Yes. Thank you. All right. Can you see the screen? Yes? Great. All right. Good afternoon, Chair White and members of the commission. The District Department of Transportation has submitted final site development plans for the 11th Street Bridge Park for your review and approval. You may recall that the preliminary site development plans came before you in April of 2020. As a reminder, the park will be located in southeast Washington DC, immediately south of the Navy Yard and just north of Anacostia Park and Historic Anacostia. The project seeks to reuse the existing piers from the old 11th Street Bridge crossing at the Anacostia River to create a unique civic destination and park that connects surrounding communities. The commission approved the preliminary and final site design for the replacement of the old 11th Street Bridge in 2011. That project replaced the 40-year-old pair of bridges across the Anacostia River to provide in safety enhancements for a new 11th Street local bridge and Interstate 695 bridge. The old 11th Street Bridge piers remained, and with additional new piers will be used as the base for the proposed park. The proposed Bridge Park required extensive coordination with US Navy and the National Park Service for access and land. The transfer of jurisdiction for the land necessary south of the river from the National Park Service to the district was approved by the commission in December of 2020. The 11th Street Bridge Park has four goals: creating a healthy community by establishing a safe place for residents to exercise and play, connecting the community with the Anacostia River, reconnecting the neighborhoods of Anacostia, Fairlon, and Capitol Hill and Navy Yard, and generating new jobs and economic vitality. The project team has had roughly 1,000 meetings involving the community and various government and local agencies throughout the design process. The proposed Bridge Park intends to connect two historically disparate sides of the river with a series of outdoor program spaces and active zones that will provide an engaging place connected to the Anacostia River. Final design maintains the original concept and includes 1.2 acres of trail and landscape area on the Navy Yard side, a hammock area and picnic garden, a central plaza, a cafe and community porch, a children's play area, an environmental education center, and two overlooks. The south side of the Bridge Park includes an amphitheater and a kayak and canoe launch adjacent to the existing Anacostia Riverwalk Trail. The roof plan includes both a Capitol overlook on the north and an Anacostia overlook on the south. The section notes the various elevations of the different Bridge Park elements, including the two overlooks at 65 feet and the environmental education center at one foot above 100 years flood elevation. The applicant has worked extensively to improve the access plan to address previous comments by the commission. This plan shows pedestrian access to and through the bridge. The area also contains an improved connection to the Riverwalk Trail. Here is a rendered view of the Bridge Park. I'll briefly walk through each of the main elements of the proposed Bridge Park, starting on the north side. These are views of the approach to the Bridge Park from the Navy Yard entrance at O Street. This includes a connection to the River Trail on the north side of the river. This is a view of the Bridge Park entry as you enter to, from the Navy Yard. The central path leads through a landscape area of rain gardens and a hammock grove toward the central plaza. The applicant has stated that local artists will be commissioned to design individual hammocks inspired by local community heroes. The central plaza is where the approach from the north connects to the great lawn and the overlooks. This is a key point of view shed on the bridge and provides a large viewing area at a higher elevation than the existing 11th Street Bridge overlooks. Using the outside path from the central plaza, visitors can access the Capitol overlook at the north end of the bridge. The commission had previously requested the applicant further coordinate with the Department of the Navy regarding any security impacts of the project to the Washington Navy Yard. The design team met with the Navy and revised several design components, including adding glass to the overlook to address the Navy's concerns. Adjacent to the central plaza is the great lawn that will function as a green roof and will provide additional space for passive recreation, educational opportunities, and active programming. The southern end of the Bridge Park roof is the Anacostia overlook. This overlook is wider and will allow for more people to view Anacostia Park and Historic Anacostia. On the bridge deck below the great lawn and the Anacostia overlook is the cafe and community porch. The cafe will provide food, beverages, and shelter from the elements for park visitors. Additionally, the community room will be made available for local stakeholders for meetings by local, for meetings by local ANC's, civic associations, and nonprofits. The proposed cafe materials will include a wood deck and concrete pavers, galvanized steel frame and cladding, fiberglass reinforced plastic, over fiber cement, galvanized steel grated handrails, and extensive glazing. These materials are consistent throughout the Bridge Park. This is a rendered view that shows the proposed cafe and community porch with the Anacostia overlook above. Continuing south on the bridge deck is the children's play area. The play area's theme is Muscle Beach and will highlight native mollusks in the Anacostia River and the important role they play in improving water quality and providing aquatic habitat. Next to the play area is the Environmental Education Center, or EEC. The EEC is intended to engage the public with the river and educate them on the local environment. Many of the other facilities and programming included in the Bridge Park and nearby Anacostia shoreline are intended to increase engagement with the EEC. The center will be run by the Anacostia Watershed Society, whose mission is to protect and restore the Anacostia River. It is a two-story structure that will include classrooms, offices, restrooms, and pantry on the first floor for the Anacostia Watershed Society, and the second floor will consist of Bridge Park offices, park ranger offices, and restrooms. The Environmental Education Center materials are the same or similar to the cafe. This rendered view, in this rendered view, you can see that visitors will be able to enter the Environmental Education Center from Anacostia Drive. The design of the EEC includes a central courtyard for gathering and programming. The path on the second floor connects to the south and the central utility plant. This rendered view shows the second floor of the Environmental Education Center and the proposed utility plant. The plant design takes advantage of the existing grade and includes a fire pump, cooling tower, mechanical and storage rooms, and the roof of this building will be used for urban agriculture for the Bridge Park. The materials will match the adjacent Environmental Education Center. In this rendered view, you see the utility plant and the urban agriculture area on the roof. The southern portion of the park includes new features, including an outdoor amphitheater and a kayak launch on the river. The proposed amphitheater depicted here was relocated from below the northern end of the bridge deck. The applicant indicated the original location was problematic, given the size and potential for noise interference from the adjacent 11th Street local and Interstate 695 bridges. The new location of the amphitheater is proposed from the location of a previously proposed water spray feature. It will be built into the existing topography of the landscape with a view overlooking the river. The performing arts of the amphitheater will be a catalyst for bringing people together to amplify local voices. The kayak canoe launch will provide access to the water from the east side of the river. The kayak launch will be used for visiting school groups during the week and rentals during the evening and weekends. The 11th Street Bridge Park is a layered landscape that brings people together with the environment and acts as an ambassador for stewardship of the Anacostia River. Each area of the Bridge Park has an educational component that speaks to the restoration and outreach work of the Anacostia watershed. The applicant has committed to an overall planting palette that is predominantly native plants that perform well in the local ecoregion. Only a few selections are adapted plant species based on microclimates and cultural limitations. The commission has received comments from Mr. Byrne with suggested plant palette changes to support the monarch butterfly. The applicant has indicated support for these changes. The applicant has updated the fencing and guardrail design to meet several goals, including aesthetics, implementation, and anti-skillability. The applicant is proposing a metal material with a two-by-two grading for the fencing and a three-by-three grading for the guardrails because it is not climbable. It is also consistent with the building facade materials. As depicted here, the guardrails are used in and around the perimeter of the Bridge Park and anywhere else they are needed. The fencing will only be used at the top of the central utility building. The steel grading design used on the guardrails has larger openings to minimize disruption to the view of the bridge. The design also incorporates lighting into the handrail of the guardrail. Here's another rendered view showing the guardrails. The project is required to meet local stormwater management requirements and has been coordinated extensively with the District Department of Energy and Environment. The project is proposing to meet stormwater with a variety of best management practices noted here. Many of these elements also intended as educational as well. There are ongoing discussions between the District Department of Energy and Environment and the applicant regarding the mitigation measures necessary to address proposed changes to wetlands and pier dredging. If design changes are required as a result of this coordination, the applicant should, the project should be resubmitted to the commission for review. Therefore, staff recommends the commission request the applicant continue to work with the District Department of Energy and Environment to address any outstanding issues. The commission previously requested additional information on the proposed lighting plan to ensure that it would not negatively impact the natural setting of the bridge. The proposed bridge lighting includes a combination of general purpose lighting for access and safety, lighting for activity areas, and architectural bridge lighting. The proposed lighting achieves the Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design Light Pollution Reduction Credit using the backlight, uplight, and glare, or BUG, method. As such, lighting levels will be appropriate to meet the design needs and minimum safety standards while minimizing SS light as well as upward and horizontal spillage. For the crisscrossing bridge deck, the applicant is proposing a continuous linear LED luminaire be mounted to the bottom of the bridge deck on the upper and lower levels to light a portion of the structure emphasizing the bridge form. Low-light ballards with a shielded light source will light the horizontal surface along open paths. The design intent is to avoid light poles in open paths. Ambient lighting will be provided by recessed in-ground paver lumineers, usually utilizing LED light sources. The wayfinding package identifies a sign hierarchy and sign family that delivers a cohesive, intuitive, and accessible wayfinding system for destinations on and adjacent to the Bridge Park. The commission previously requested additional information regarding the wayfinding for the Bridge Park. The design and color palette are intended to coordinate with the Bridge Park building materials and the natural setting of the Bridge Park. Overall, the applicant has significantly improved the overall Bridge Park access plan and wayfinding package. The applicant has addressed all prior requests by the commission and improved the overall design and details of the proposed Bridge Park. And as such, staff recommends the commission approves the final site development plans for the proposed 11th Street Bridge Park located in southeast Washington DC. This concludes my presentation, as I have incorporated the remaining recommendations into my presentation, and I will not repeat them here. I am here to answer any questions that commission may have. Scott Kratz from Building Bridges Across the River is here to provide some remarks, and the project design team, along with representatives from D-DOT, are here to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hair, and welcome, Mr. Kratz.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Scott Kratz. I'm the Senior Vice President for Building Bridges Across the River. This is a partnership between Building Bridges Across the River and the District of Columbia, specifically the District Department of Transportation. First of all, thank you, Ms. Hair. You've did a fantastic job summarizing the program. It's a lot, 10 years of work, to be able to summarize in about 10, 15 minutes. But thank you to the commission and to the NCPC staff for pulling this together. The goal of the 11th Street Bridge Park is to transform this aged-out piece of infrastructure to extend the life of the original federal investment while creating a new civic space that supports the community's environmental, economic, cultural, and physical health, while also reconnecting two long-divided neighborhoods that have been separated not only by the Anacostia River but two freeways. This project has been informed by over 1,000 meetings with the community. Every programming element has come from local residents. Local residents selected the design team, and while not the topic of this discussion today, something to note that the community has also supported and created a series of equitable development strategies to ensure that local residents can stay and thrive in place, get ahead of any issues of gentrification displacement. To date, we've been able to invest about a little more than $85 million in the nearby neighborhood with affordable housing, workforce development, preservation of black-owned businesses, and arts and culture strategies. The rest of the design team and the project lead are on, I believe, on this call and can answer any questions, along with my colleague Connie Eskinder from the District Department of Transportation. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you so much. Do commissioners have any questions for Ms. Hair or Mr. Kratz?
I do, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Dixon, I know this is an area near and dear to your heart.
Yeah, well, Scott knows that I was with him when this thing began. I think, at least the concept that was presented at the Anacostia Coordinating Council, which I chaired for 30 years, and, and he's carried it a long way. And we're all excited about what he's done. It's a great concept. He knows that I've always been a little concerned about putting more resources on the ground that we have there at the park than building a new structure, but he's done it, and he's put it together, and it's going to be very, very nice, and I congratulate him and all those who've been associated with it. I want to ask him this, though. In terms of programming, ongoing programming and maintenance, how will, what will be the partners in that effort? Because it's a, it's a, it's a very ambitious programming and space, so please.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon, and thank you for being with us on this journey since I made that presentation at ACC almost nine years ago. So that's a wonderful question. We are currently working with a memorandum agreement between our nonprofit Building Bridges Across the River that runs the ARC. We run a network of seven urban farms and the Skyline Workforce Center to run and manage the park. So Building Bridges Across the River will have a 99-year lease or permit. We're still working out the exact, the legal mechanism, but to run the park. So the idea is that the city, the District Department of Transportation, will be responsible for the infrastructure, the piers, the pilings, right? Bridges need to be inspected on a regular basis. The city will fold that into their regular inspections, and then we, Building Bridges Across the River, will run everything from the deck on up. We are doing this in a spirit of partnership. The, as we have a wonderful model at the ARC, we have 14 nonprofits that are all co-located here. An example of that is the Anacostia Watershed Society, as noted in the presentation, will be running the Environmental Education Center as well as the kayak and canoe launch. They have 31 years of working to restore the health of the Anacostia River. And then in addition, we'll continue our, we will program the amphitheater, the center, Anacostia Plaza, the community front porch, but just like we program our theater and black box here east of the river, working very closely with nearby residents and nonprofits to ensure that there is a sliding scale on the, so at no cost, or little cost for local residents to use that space. Did that answer your question, Commissioner Dixon?
Let's see, if Commissioner Dixon comes back. But I do see Commissioner Cozart. Has her hand raised?
Yes. Good afternoon, Scott, and, and thanks to you and Ms. Hair and others for the presentation. The question I had, you spoke in your remarks, Scott, about kind of the pieces related to the Equitable Development Initiative, and I'm curious if there are ways that we might be able to see something that's more of an initiative, a program that you see, you know, in people? Is there any way that you've explored how to manifest that in the space at all?
Yes. Wonderful question, Commissioner Cozart. Thank you. Our first version of the Equitable Development Plan, as you might know, focused on affordable housing, workforce development, and small businesses. The, we realized that we left out arts and culture, which is equally as important, the, to really elevate that, amplifying the voices of local residents to the same level as those economic factors. And so several years ago, back in 2019, we worked with arts and culture leaders to create equitable development strategies around arts and culture, and many of those, if not most of those, manifest on the park itself. And I'll give you just two examples. We recently, earlier this year, or actually beginning of last year, we initiated, we worked with arts and culture leaders to commission major artworks for the park. Much of this work has been, how do we put that decision-making ability, decision-making power, back in the hands of local residents? So we created a curatorial committee comprised of local residents, stakeholders, arts agencies, arts organizations, to select for major pieces of art for the park. We'll be happy to send those examples to everybody. I'm happy to say that they're all artists in the DMV. Interestingly, they're all women, that include a giant mural, a lighted art piece, a major art commission by a mother-daughter DC-based duo. They have Jackson Jarvis Studios, who did the artwork around the Anacostia Metro Station. These giant, 11 giant metal, the sphere, circles called Anacostia Sunrise/Sunset Portals that really becomes the anchor east of the river. The, and one of the art interventions that... The, and one of the art interventions that we're really excited about is a mobile small business kiosk that will exist on the park. The featuring, uh, black entrepreneurs from east of the river. Um, so if we're attracting a million people a year, eight hundred thousand and one point two million visitors a year, I believe, is the sort of estimate. We want to make sure as, as much as we can that those dollars are going back into the hands of local residents. Lastly, um, to test and pilot this, we're actually building the small business kiosk this year. It will debut at next year's River Festival with a larger idea to really test and pilot sort of what works, but more importantly, building a pipeline of black entrepreneurs east of the river so that when the park opens, you know, we'll, we'll have this, um, sort of deep bench on the, of, um, small businesses, black owned, small businesses east of the river that can, um, really leverage the park for their economic benefit.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions, uh, from the commissioners before we get to public testimony? I see Commissioner Dixon, you're back. Um, Scott wanted to know if he had answered your question.
Uh, as always, he get it, did a thorough, thorough job. Uh, again, I just wishing the best and, uh, we'll move on and see how, how it goes. I'm looking forward to it.
Good, shovels in the ground, Commissioner Dixon.
Thanks, Commissioner. Uh, we do have one person signed up to speak. Our first speaker is Bernard Byrne. Mr. Byrne, you will have three minutes to provide your testimony. Welcome.
Thank you. I am pleased to learn that the applicant has agreed to change the, uh, to, to implement the changes to plant palette that I suggested in my written statement. The plant palette for this project needed several changes to improve its function and protect the environment. Please consult my written statement for further, with further information about this subject. The project will have three plant mixes containing perennials and ground covers, full sun meadow mix, bio retention mix and shaded meadow mix. The first two mixes contain several species of milkweed. The third contained no milkweed. None of these mixes were optimal. The monarch butterfly populations are falling throughout the United States. Monarch caterpillars feed only on milkweed. All three mix, milkweed mixes should therefore contain milkweeds that are appropriate for the locations. I suggested the following changes to the mixes. Fullness, the sun meadow mix, remove world milkweed and butterfly weed. Monarchs lay few eggs, eggs, eggs on these milkweeds. Replace these with common milkweed in skies and sunny areas. Monarchs prefer to lay eggs on common milkweed. Bio retention mix, replace bio common milkweed with swat milkweed. Bio retention areas collect stormwater. Plants in these areas thrive in moist conditions. Swat milkweed grows best in such locations. Monarchs prefer to lay eggs on swat milkweed more than they do on common milkweed. Shaded meadow mix, this mix lacked milkweeds. Therefore, I therefore suggested the applicant add the poke milkweed to the mix. This milkweed fries in fully and partially shaded areas such as woodlands and edges. Monarchs prefer to lay eggs on this plant. The executive director's report states to the applicant noting that the plugs containing this plant are currently not available. However, I found two nurseries that now ship those plugs. I have a report from the applicant of these. More nurseries will ship poke, will, will plugs in the spring when people usually plant milkweeds. Non-native species, remove this, the six non-native plants that my written statement identifies. The park's intent is to teach the native ecology of the Anacostia River and its surroundings. However, those plants are native to the Midwest and its prairies. They are not native to the National Capital Region. They may become invasive if planted here. That would teach the wrong lesson. Wind pollinated grasses and sedges, plant only small numbers of the wind pollinated grasses and sedges that my written statement testifies. These plants feed few native butterflies, bees and other pollinators. Many of the populations are falling in the National Capital Region. The region's development has destroyed much of their habitat. The applicant did not provide plant palettes for some other, uh, parts of the project. I asked the applicant to consider my suggestions when developing these plant palettes of these other parts of the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. And we really appreciate your perspective on this and I'm glad to see you again today. Does the commission have any questions? I understand, uh, Scott, the, that these have been taken under advisement. Maybe I should just ask you if you'd like to respond?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Byrne, for, um, these suggestions. We do have, uh, representatives from our landscape architecture team of Olin, both Hallie Boyce and Darryl Campania here can probably speak about this, uh, in more expertise than I. Hallie? Or Darryl? And they were.
Good afternoon, Chairman White and Commissioners. I'm Hallie Boyce, Design Partner at Olin. Uh, I'm joined today by Associate Darrell Campana and our Living Systems Specialist Judy Vanoski. I will turn this over to her in a moment. Uh, we want to thank, uh, Mr. Byrne for his, uh, expertise and suggestions on the plant palettes. Uh, we have taken his suggestions, uh, under advisement and have made, uh, the changes to the planting plans accordingly. Uh, we really appreciate his, uh, input and the desire to, uh, promote the ecological health of this landscape further and address, uh, in particular, the habitat, uh, for the monarch butterfly. I would like to have Judy, uh, make a few statements if possible, if she's able to access, uh, the call at the moment.
Yeah, can you, can you hear me, Hallie?
Yes.
And panel, thank you. Um, I actually do have a, um, a, uh, matrix of the plants that are now, we have taken all into consideration, um, the comments of Mr. Byrne and appreciate his wisdom. I have a, um, matrix of the plants that now exist and I could share that matrix with the group. Um, it very simply highlights, um, the pollinator value of the, of the plants that are currently in the mix as well as identifying the, uh, butterfly weed, um, milkweed that exists in all three different, uh, categories now. Um, should I share my screen?
I, I think you could, if we have a moment to do that, if not, you could certainly send that to us and we'll make sure everyone gets a copy.
Okay, I can bring it up very quickly.
There you are.
Yep, can you see the, can you see this?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so, um, I think this should help Mr. Byrne hopefully. Uh, uh, these, uh, different, uh, sedges, grasses and, um, flowering forbs are part of our mixes. Um, I've gone to the USDA, um, uh, website that identifies whether they are workhorse pollinators and what values or habitat, um, and pollinator values are from very high. Um, most, most of these are very high. Um, everything in green is a native grass um, or sedge that is from, uh, this, the Anacostia area. And, um, all of these orange are the milkweeds that were suggested specifically for, um, the areas that, um, Mr. Byrne had, uh, identified. So I'll just go through this. As you can see, we have over fifty different, uh, perennial plants within our matrix of ground cover plants that are all native with very high habitat and, uh, pollinator value. I would also say that I think they're also quite, uh, attractive plants. They, these were selected, um, in many cases for, um, ease of management, besides their ecological value, their aesthetic can, um, value as well as their, um, ease of management, whether that was in an area that we wanted the plant to spread out and take over an area um, or whether it was something that we wanted to maintain and, uh, we took into consideration the wind pollinating, uh, factors as well. So, um, none of the native, non-native grasses exist in this palette to date.
Well, thank you so much for such a thorough response and thank you, Mr. Byrne. Um, it seems a very small, delicate thing to think about a butterfly and how much it impacts our environment. And I appreciate the design team really taking to heart, uh, the recommendations and the inclusion of the species that you had identified. And, um, I see you had your hand up, Mr. Byrne?
Yes, I just want, I went through this very quickly. I just, I want to make sure that, that you took out, um, the butterfly weed and the, uh, and the world milkweed from the, uh, from the list. I, I went through it fast, I can say with it. But these shouldn't be, they're not be on the list because the monarchs don't lay many eggs on these milkweeds. And what actually, yeah, what actually happened is these milkweeds don't contain, God, there's toxins, uh, and if the birds, if the caterpillars grow up on these, the birds will eat them. They would then learn to, uh, eat monarch butterflies. So that's why I should, they should not be in any of these planting lists.
Sounds like there may be further conversations about, um, the details of the plan and we really appreciate the dialogue that I'm sure will continue with Mr. Byrne and the design team.
And we're happy to share this list.
Please send me a copy.
Thank you so much. Um, Mr. Byrne's testimony is also available on our website. And with that, our public testimony is concluded on this proposal. Thank you again, Mr. Byrne. I'll now open it up to the commission for discussion and if the commissioners could please turn on their cameras. I will start with Commissioner Dixon and then go in round robin format using our normal seating order. Uh, and please keep your webcams on. So, Mr. Dixon?
Yes, uh, first, I, I, I want to, again, indicate my pleasure and what's going on and look forward to it. And I would like to be, uh, able to move this at the right.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Cash?
Uh, thanks so much for the presentation and for the additional testimony. Um, it's an exciting project. Uh, I just, uh, I want to thank, uh, everyone who's worked on it to get it to this point. Um, the one minor caveat I've had in the past with these D dot projects uh, is all about future governance, hopefully in this case because the Anacostia, uh, group is, is involved. That won't be as much of an issue, but I always want to put on record that hopefully D dot will continue to do whatever it needs to do over the years with this, this new asset. Uh, but no, thanks. It's, uh, exciting.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis? Commissioner Davis? We'll move on to Commissioner Ginsburg.
I have no additional questions. I just appreciate learning about the flora and the different impacts it can have on our local fauna. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kozart?
Uh, very excited about this project and the progress that it's made, uh, over time and how, uh, thoughtful the approach has been to really think about how infrastructure can reconnect communities. Um, and in some ways, an idea ahead of its time, uh, and helping to, you know, kind of, uh, spur some of the thinking that we've, uh, had at the federal level around reconnecting communities. So really excited, um, to, to see how that's developed. Um, and I think this is really important from the district's perspective, both for the support of neighborhood development on both sides of the river. And so very excited about that. Uh, the one comment that I have is that I was looking through, um, the renderings, which were very exciting. Um, and just want to, um, encourage you as you do refinements to those to really think about, um, disabled people, people with differing abilities and making sure that that representation is there in some of those renderings. Uh, thank you for the presentation and thank you to the staff for, um, the analysis.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon?
No, very, um, good presentation, very interesting design. Looking forward to seeing it, uh, become reality over the next few years. I have no questions.
Thank you, Commissioner May.
Uh, yeah, I don't have any, uh, any comments. Um, it's interesting to see this finally getting, um, over what looks like the last hurdle here at NCPC and a few more still to clear before it's built, but look forward to seeing that.
Commissioner Argo?
Mike, um, I echo the, uh, comments, uh, especially, um, Mr. May's comments, looking, you know, it's been, um, it's been an interesting process and, um, it's lovely to see how, how, how interestingly and positively a lot of the, a lot of the comments and suggestions have been integrated into the final plan. Um, and it's exciting and it's exciting, um, for, uh, but for everybody, but particularly this neighborhood. And, um, having that kind of, uh, and that kind of a bridge and an entrance to, um, a neighborhood that is, you know, that is not known, known or appreciated as much as, um, I hope it will be in the, in the future as a result of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright?
Well, I am not a gusher. But if I, if I, uh, if, if we weren't at the end of a very long process, I probably would take time to gush. I want to just say a couple of things. So, um, I think this, this, this project has the potential. It's not just about the neighborhoods in this case. I think it's going to put Washington on the map, um, for a lot of really good reasons. We tend to, and I've seen this in, um, in our own projects, I'm embarrassed to say. We have a, we, we have a, a concept that's really just top drawer. And then by the time we get to final, it's kind of lost some of its vim and verve because we've designed by committee and we just killed the spirit of the thing sometimes, more often than not. And in this case, I think that has not happened. Um, it has gotten better. And I can't think of a box, it doesn't check for design and planning. So that's as, that's as close to gushing as I'll get. Um, and I'd also just like to say, Scott Kratz, I don't know you, but I've been on your email list all these years. You are the hardest working guy in Washington. And, and it shows. So I, I would like to congratulate you because you're, you're very close to pulling off something that is akin to a miracle in this city. And you should be really proud. Um, and so should the design team. It really is, um, going to make the High Line look like it's, you know, amateur hour.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright, um, for those eloquent words and for everyone's, um, well-deserved praise for this project. Um, I'm happy to say I have known Scott for a little more than ten years as, um, a colleague and, and watching your work on this project. And I just want to say that I really commend you, Scott, and your team for such a deep and sustained commitment to holistic, innovative and inclusive planning and design as Commissioner Wright just, uh, stated so eloquently. And your work to address park equity, um, that you took on, you know, in a deep way very early on. And with Commissioner Dixon's very watchful eye over that process, I think it's, it's really been wonderful to see how this has turned out. And to ensure this project is a true benefit to the community and the way you've done this is setting a new standard for public realm planning. And, you know, you and I have talked a lot about infrastructure reuse and, uh, the High Line Network that's trying to lift up these projects around the United States for how we have multipurpose infrastructure and understand the benefits that the public realm projects can bring to communities, but figuring out how to do it and do it in a sustained way because we have to think for the long term. These things don't happen overnight. So I really appreciate, um, everything that you all have done, you and your team and the community, frankly. That's a lot of volunteer hours, um, and commitment that have gone into this. So we're all very excited to, to see this move forward. Um, so congratulations. So, uh, with that, are there any further comments or questions before, uh, we ask for a motion from a certain commissioner to move this project? Do I hear a motion to approve the final site development plans for the Eleventh Street Bridge Park?
Man, yeah, I would, uh, make, make that motion and, and, and let people understand, at least in my heart and mind, that things related to the Anacostia River, uh, to me are very spiritual. So some of the energy we get, we got from Mark, from, 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 for the project, I think is a spiritual one because the river is, is special to me at least and others because of its history and its connection. I also wanted to point out that, uh, one of my, uh, classmates that grew up with me, who was one of our senior guys, was on, is on the group that is selecting the artwork. I was asked to do it, but I thought he was better because Hughie Flemmons, uh, was a guy who jumped in the river many years ago to swim and save a person. And he has a real special connection and lives in Southeast still. So I just think it's a great idea. So I just think it's a great idea, a lot, lot of things that are moving to me. But I just moved, make a motion that he go for.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Dixon. Is there a second?
Yes, I'd like a second.
Thank you, Commissioner Kozart. Ms. Costa, can you please confirm the motion and the second and take the vote by roll call?
Certainly. The motion was made by Commissioner Dixon with a second by Commissioner Kozart. And with that, Commissioner Kozart?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Chair White?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
I'm staying.
And Commissioner Ginsburg?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion has carried. Congratulations again, Scott, to you and your team. And we will now bid you adieu and move to our next agenda item.
Thank you so much. And thank you for the extraordinarily kind words. We look forward to walking across that bridge together in the next few years. Thank you.
Thank you. Next agenda item 6B is for the approval of revised preliminary site and building plans for the castle perimeter security and elevator overrun, which is part of the Smithsonian South Mall Campus Historic Core Revitalization. We will now hear from Mr. Fliss.
Thank you, Chair White. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Hopefully you can see my screen. The Smithsonian Institution has submitted revised preliminary plans for two components of their project, as the chair has mentioned. This is the revitalization of the Historic Core or the Rock. The commission approved the preliminary site and building plans for much of the project back in March. However, two components were not approved. Those include the perimeter security as well as the elevator overrun at the east range of the castle. The applicant has submitted revised plans for both of these components. First, for the perimeter security, which has been significantly reduced. And the proposed elevator overrun has actually been eliminated entirely. So again, this is preliminary review. The commission evaluates the applicant's approach to the proposed site and building plans, looks at the landscape and perimeter security design, impacts to key views, and how the project has responded to previous commission comments. In this case, again, we're looking at those two components, the perimeter security and the elevator overrun, which the commission did not approve previously. So I think everybody's familiar with the South Mall campus of the Smithsonian. But again, here, here for reference, it is located just south of the National Mall, south of Jefferson Drive and north of Independence Avenue. I'll note that since the last review, the scope of the broader project has been revised to focus just on the castle itself. The improvements to the Arts and Industries Building, the new cooling towers and that tunnel that was proposed underneath the lawn panels of the mall are no longer included. As such, the perimeter security only includes the portion that is long and along Jefferson Drive in front of the castle. The perimeter security, which was proposed along Independence Avenue with AIB, will move forward as a separate project. This, this will allow for additional time for coordination, particularly with D dot. As we, as we had discussed in March, some of that coordination still needed to happen. So again, today we're focusing just on Jefferson Drive. So back in March, starting with the perimeter security, here's what you reviewed as part of those original plans. The perimeter security is highlighted here in red. This included, as you may recall, long stretches of bollards in front of the castle as well as AIB, essentially extending from west of the castle to the Ripley Garden here on the east. At that time, the project, as I mentioned, also included bollards along Independence Avenue. And this is a rendering from one of the options that you saw back in March. Again, the extensive line of bollards proposed along the curb on Jefferson Drive. This again wrapped around the castle, continued towards AIB. So in March, the commission expressed significant concerns with the proposal and requested the applicant consider a more holistic approach to perimeter security, considering the entire length of Jefferson Drive in front of the castle for gallery and AIB. You offered some recommendations to consider. First, minimize those long stretches of bollards. Second, minimize the number of locations where the bollards cross the sidewalks. You may recall there were several locations where the perimeter security kind of jumped back and forth between the curb and the, the building yard. Suggested that there be reduce or minimize alterations to any grade, to the changes to grade in front of the castle. This is important because the castle itself and these other buildings are historic landmarks. And then the commission also requested additional plans and renderings of any new designs and further coordination with the National Park Service. So in response to comments received from the commission and others through the section 106 process, the design for perimeter security has been substantially revised. The updated design does look holistically at the perimeter security on Jefferson Drive from in front of the freer, the castle, as well as AIB. The design reduces the use of bollards and uses new street furniture to provide secure perimeter security. In addition, the Smithsonian has determined that the areas requiring protection are much more limited and thereby reducing the overall extent of the project. So here on the top, you can see in red, the areas of proposed perimeter security. These are for gallery, the castle, and then AIB. For reference here, you can see the original plan back from March. Again, really showing that extensive line of bollards that was originally proposed. So the applicant looked to design elements across the South Mall campus, particularly the castle, AIB and Freer, to inform the materials and the forms of the perimeter security features. These include things like the materials, the Seneca sandstone of the castle, the pattern brick at AIB. They've also looked at some of the metalwork, particularly the building trim, other ornamentals on several of the buildings to apply in certain conditions. And you'll see those in some of the examples that they've developed. So the perimeter security elements now include a collection of site furnishings, including low walls, strengthened or hardened seating elements, ornamental metal grills, as well as some other objects. These materials have a unified language of color and form and texture. Again, drawing from the inspiration I just showed you. Here in this first slide, you could see some examples. There are still bollards included. These have been minimized as much as possible. But other elements are also proposed. So here you can see a hardened urn on a base that's incorporated into the perimeter security. There are some low walls, some also integrated with benches as shown here on the bottom of the image. Other low walls with decorative metal grills. Again, the, the metalwork is pulling from the designs and buildings. And then also seating elements. These include benches. The applicant evaluated a couple of different alternatives with various designs. You can see here, I'll note that in the past, I know Commissioner Dixon has mentioned the idea of really looking at multipurpose security elements. So this is a good example of where this functions for visitor use as a bench, but it also does meet the perimeter security needs. So I will quickly walk you through the different sections of the perimeter security. First, starting with the freer. This includes simply a series of bollards at the entry points for pedestrians and then a connecting low wall with metal grill that wraps around the central landscape island. And this is just a rendering showing that same thing. The low wall with the grills is, it's hidden here behind the landscape. Of course, there are still several bollards spaced in front of the pedestrian areas to help protect those entries and gathering locations. I'll mention again, the, the focus of this project is on the castle. But per the commission's request, they have provided these designs to show you how the perimeter security in the future could be extended to the fair. And also you'll see later the AIB. So moving on to the castle, the perimeter security again is focused on the front of the building. Essentially those entry points for pedestrians and gathering areas. This again includes a combination of bollards near the portico. Integrated benches, one bench here, a series of bollards, a decorative planted urn, integrating new signage that's also hardened. Again, the bollards, a decorative two sided bench on either side of the portico. And then again signage and benches on the other side of the castle. And so here's just another, this is a rendering of that same area. So you can see the various elements. This is the new signage, which replaced existing signage onsite. And then closer to the, the main entrance of the castle, you can see several bollards and then also this new hardened bench element, which would be double sided. And then this is just an elevation view showing essentially the same elements. You can see the hardened bench here, signage, the, the earned, the hardened earned, and then bollards and additional benches here. And I'll focus on these benches here as I talk about some of our recommendations. In general, from staff's perspective, the reduced extent and the, of this perimeter security, as well as the use of these new context sensitive elements is a, is a significant improvement over the previous proposal. However, we do recommend additional refinement of the bench designs. As I mentioned, there are two freestanding double sided benches. That's the footprint of which is highlighted here on this image on either side of the portico for the castle. We do support the idea of integrating those security elements with features that can help support or be used by visitors. However, in this case, we did find that the proposed bench did seem quite large and bulky. And you can see here the kind of perspectives of what this element could look like. The hardened benches that I mentioned that are further to the west and east of the castle also appear quite large. These are integrated into low walls. And so they have the potential to look very long and monolithic and could potentially impact views towards the castle. So we do request that the applicant reevaluate the proposed bench designs and consider additional refinements. This could include reducing the overall length, also reducing the width, creating a more open base, so it doesn't feel, feel as solid or heavy and or breaking the benches up instead of providing just one long bench. And then moving on, this is the, the section in front of the AIB. Again, this is limited to the entry area. There's a series of bollards in front of the main stairs and then hardened walls that are integrated into the, into the landscape. And then this is just a rendering of the same area. Again, you can see the bollards that are proposed. You cannot really see the hardened landscape walls as are hidden by the perimeter, by the landscape. Again, this is not part of the current project, but again, it's showing the applicant has taken to heart the, the idea that they need to look comprehensively at this entire stretch per the commission's last request. I'll also note that the applicant is looking at updating the light fixtures with Olmsted light fixtures on Jefferson Drive. They are still looking at the alignment for these elements. These are not intended to be perimeter security, but they are continuing to evaluate this approach. We do recommend that as the applicant looks at the perimeter, the perimeter security and particularly these other streetscape elements that they should be coordinating with the National Streetscape Manual Interagency Working Group as plans and details are developed for this stretch along Jefferson Drive. And then moving on to the other component, you'll recall that the applicant was looking at a new elevator overrun at the east end of the castle. This was required to meet code and accessibility requirements as they look to increase the public access to the castle. The previous design would have removed an old bulkhead and replaced it with a new, new penthouse as part of that elevator replacement. However, this would have changed the roofline and had impacts to the, to the castle. So after further research, the Smithsonian has determined that they can use a machine roomless elevator in this location due to the historic preservation sensitivities of the castle. As a result, there will not be any rooftop penthouse required as part of this element. The existing elevator penthouse, which is not historic and not original, will be removed and the historic roofline will be restored. So staff definitely supports this revised design. And then finally, I just want to mention something that has been a part of the section 106 discussions related to interiors. There have been discussions about the extent of the consultation as it applies to the interiors related to the broader rock project. NCPC, the Smithsonian Advisory Council, have been coordinating on this question. And the advisory council has helped highlight some, the, the legal concept, which is applies in this case, which is the, the idea of independent utility or basically whether interior and exterior components of a project have separate and distinct functionality, or do they work together? NCPC and the advisory council have concurred on a memorandum to the extent which NCPC's limited interior section 106 obligations will apply. Regarding this project, there are two areas that will require some additional consultation. They include the replacement and new blast resistant windows. And then secondly, the new basement doors in the, in the, in the castle. I'm only noting this because these are not components of this part of the submission, but they will be part of future reviews and will provide more information about this legal concept in the future. So there's more to come on this, on this, these parts of the project. And so in conclusion, based on the comments received from the commission and others, the design for the perimeter security on Jefferson Drive has been substantially reduced, revised. The design looks holistically at the entire campus, reduces the use of bollards and uses new street furniture. In addition, the overall extent has been greatly reduced. Staff finds this new approach is much more sensitive to the setting and the character of the castle. And therefore, staff recommends preliminary approval. I have covered the rest of the recommendations, so I'm not going to repeat them. But I am available for any questions. I will also now turn it over to Ron Cortez, who is under secretary, under secretary for administration with the Smithsonian for some brief comments. The applicant and their design team are also available to help answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fliss. Good afternoon, Madam Chair White and members of the commission. It's a pleasure to come before you today for this revised preliminary review of several elements of this long awaited project that will expand the public use of the Smithsonian's Castle Visitor Center. We hope that you will support the improvements made to design to significantly reduce the impact of perimeter security near the primary entrances to these historic buildings. And we look forward to addressing your recommendations in the final design. The revitalization of the Smithsonian's Historic Core is along with the creation of the two museums, a priority undertaking for the Smithsonian over the next decade. As under secretary administration, I'm working with Secretary Bunch to help steer these projects, which promise not only to transform our architectural legacy, but also how we achieve our mission to increase and diffuse knowledge in ways that include all Americans. Our primary goals for the castle continue to be the expansion of its public and competing space, the complete rehabilitation of its interior annexure, and the addition of a seismic base isolation system to address earthquake resilience with the least impact to the historic fabric. We plan to return to the commission early next year for the final review of the project. We are grateful to NCPC staff for their involvement in the ongoing historic preservation consultation process critical to completing the final design. Members of the Smithsonian and its design team are present to address any technical questions you may have. Thank you. I'll now turn this back.
Sorry, I was on mute. And thank you, Mr. Cortez. Always a pleasure to see you and have you join us. I appreciate you being here. Thank you, Mr. Fliss, for the presentation. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Cortez or Mr. Fliss? Hearing no questions, I will now open it up. Yes, Commissioner Dixon?
Yeah, first of all, I appreciate the shout out about the furniture that I continually ask for. But I think I just want to make it clear that I understand where ballots are needed, particularly for entrances where you can't block things that easily or well. But there are ways that, you know, just the concept that if you put a disc with a hole in it that was the size of the ballot and you just dropped it over it, it would create a table. Or seat people to rest the sandwich on or drink. You know, you don't have to have them all through, but just in addition to the ballot itself would be functional. I can think of all, we had a whole booklet we did and I thought this was in there. But what a simple thing to do, just put a weighted disc that doesn't, that's movable over top of a ballot. So it slides down over it. Maybe there'd be a notch in the ballot to catch it. And then we, someplace for tourists to put their sandwich down or lay a bag down or even maybe even spit on it. It doesn't have to be that large, but a place to take Doesn't have to be that large, but a place to take a break, a functional thing. You can't sit on a ballot. That's pretty pretty rough. Or use a ballot, even the balance of a coffee cup or your key on top of that. That's that's the kind of thing I'm thinking of breaking it up with that and making it useful thing. So I appreciate the effort and maybe 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 it can be done. I know there's always expense and restraints on things like this. But what kind of experience to punch out a bunch of round discs with holes that could overball that would slip over it and create a space to sit things on or to sit down on, basically like a bar stool. Yeah, thank you very much. I don't want to beat a dead horse or whatever. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. So why don't we ask all the commissioners to turn on your cameras? And we will Mr., let's start with Commissioner Dixon. Do you have any further comments you want to make or?
I'm quite pleased with the action. I hope that my thoughts still will be included, possibly.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash.
I just want to thank Smithsonian for going back to the drawing board on a lot of the security. Securities become kind of an ubiquitous thing in the district over the past 20 years. It's great to see that you can still maintain your operational requirements and kind of scale it back and use some other creative ways to to shield some of it. So I just, I really thank you for the thoughtfulness and finding ways to minimize it, but agree that that there's a little bit further refinement that that may be necessary just to kind of like lower that profile a bit. But I think it shows that when you try hard enough that you can meet the requirements with a little less obstruction. So thanks for that.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis.
No further comments from me. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Ginsburg.
No comments from me either. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Kozar.
No additional comments from me. Thanks to the staff.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon.
I have no comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner May.
Yeah, a few things to mention. The first of all, I do appreciate the way this, these two components of the project have improved significantly since we saw it last. So certainly, you know, being able to do away with the the changes to the roof that were necessary by the elevator, that's a that's a huge thing. And then, of course, perimeter security, which is a big concern of ours, given that, you know, it's it borders the mall right there. The I will say the I agree with much of the comments for further refinement coming from staff. I'll also say that our our interest in this project is not limited to the fact that it is, you know, it's on the mall. It's also the fact that this is an NHL. And our staff have been monitoring that very closely throughout because we have to we have to weigh in on any potential impacts to NHL. And there are a few things that are not quite clear yet, and I assume that they will be addressed in further development before we get to a final approval. And before everything is completed on the section 106 side, some of the things that were noted to me were the rooftop egress on the East Range Roof, the perimeter moat details that will be necessary for base isolation, if that goes forward, and then expansion of area ways around the perimeter. I would also note that there are, you know, we are glad to have resolution on the issue of the legal standard for interior review under section 106, because that was an issue that was hanging out there. I'm not sure and really love the net result. But it is an unusual circumstance with the Smithsonian and their unusual authorities. And, you know, we like to we like to get into other people's business very seriously. So, you know, being constrained on that because of Smithsonian's authorities is you know, it's it's not always easy to to swallow, but you know, it is what it is. And again, it's good to have resolution. The in in terms of the staff comments, I think we have a thing we mentioned is that the comments about freestanding benches and how they might be further refined, that applies not just for the ones that are freestanding, but all and but those that are built in landscape areas as well. So that would be something to look at. So with all of that, again, it's overall very positive that we've reached the stage and have made these improvements and reduced the impacts and come up with a much improved design. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner May. Commissioner Argo.
Yes, video on, video off. Okay. I got it now. Just 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 one kind of wrap up comment. I think I think what I was seeing, especially in my time on the commission, and I also had to deal with in another in another time that my life, the balancing the design goals, the design aspects with with the need for security and integrating those two things is always a challenge. And good for them for doing the work that they're doing and doing the and presenting to us these refinements and these changes. Very supportive and appreciative of the work that was done on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright.
Well, there's not much left to say. The perimeter security is a major improvement. I'm always glad to see the march of the penguins go away. They were really, really intrusive, I thought, in front of the port cochere especially. The consulting party meetings have your consulting parties have given you a lot of good advice, I think, on finishes and furnishings. I agree with the staff assessment. Those benches kind of they they're beautiful in 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 on a smaller, I mean, they look like cruise ships now. They because they're so long, because you're trying to get them to do their their job as security elements, they've sort of lost some of the inherent elegance in the design. And I I I agree with the the notion that that should be revisited. And of course, the the no elevator penthouse is welcome news for for anyone. So I would I would pay very close attention to some of the advice you got from the consulting parties when you get down to the final details, but it's all moving in the right direction, and that's quite a relief.
Thank you. Well, I would also like to add, this is a much improved project, and I I think the approach of the Smithsonian team to perimeter security is exactly what we were looking for. As you've heard from our commission, and we appreciate the effort to keep security elements out of the public space, but no, it's a delicate balance that you're trying to reach. So I agree with staff that additional refinements are necessary for the benches. Sounds like these are already underway, and thank you, Commissioner May, that really should be all benches. So I think that's a subtle but important point. We look forward to seeing the next submission, and thank you for your hard work on this. With that, are there any other further comments or questions from the commission? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the revised preliminary site and building plans for the castle perimeter security and elevator override?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Ms. Costa, can you please confirm the motion in a second and take the vote by roll call?
Certainly. Commissioner Wright made the motion, Commissioner McMahon the second. And with that, Commissioner Kozar?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Chair White?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Epstein.
Thank you. And Commissioner Ginsburg?
Epstein.
Thank you. The motion is carried. The next item is to approve the final Arlington National Cemetery Real Property Master Plan. And we are going to hear from Mr. Webb. Welcome, Mr. Webb.
Thank you, Chair White. How are you?
I'm fine. Thank you. And you?
I'm well, thank you.
Go ahead.
Are you all able to see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Good afternoon, Chair White and members of the commission. Arlington National Cemetery has submitted a final master plan for commission approval. The commission provided comments on the draft master plan at its July 7th meeting just a few months ago. Prior to that, the commission last approved a master plan for ANC in 2015. As a reminder, ANC is a 639 acre cemetery located in Arlington County, Virginia. The commission approved two expansions to the cemetery in the last few years. The Millennium Expansion was approved in 2015 with construction completed in 2019. And the Southern Expansion received its final revised approval in 2021. Both of these expansions will provide ANC much needed burial capacity. This master plan before you does not propose any additional expansion of the cemetery outside its current boundaries. I will also note that in 2020, a land swap occurred between the National Park Service and ANC, in which the land associated with the approach into the cemetery via Memorial Avenue to the Women in Military Service for America Memorial, or WMSA, including the road and area on both sides of the hedgerow, was transferred for MPS's jurisdiction to ANC. ANC had used the land under a memorandum of agreement, but now it is fully under ANC's jurisdiction. For the final review of a master plan, the commission should be focused on such issues as has the applicant addressed the comments from the commission on the previous review? And are there any resolved issues with the final plan? I'll cover these topics throughout the presentation and how the applicant responded to the commission's previous comments. Back in July, the commission provided comments on the draft master plan for ANC, commenting favorably on the goals and overall approach presented in the draft and commended the plan's commitment to maintaining the mission and historic character of the cemetery. The commission supported the stated vision, goals, and objectives for the draft plan. Since the draft review, the applicant has responded to the commission's comments and recommendations for the final review, including ongoing coordination with the National Park Service. The remaining unresolved issue relates to an identified flex space area in Area Development Plan One, which is just north of Memorial Avenue, that the applicant has identified for potential long range projects, including possible development of new columbaria. I will discuss this in upcoming slides. As a reminder, the master plan divides the cemetery into four area development plans for discussion. The area development plan one is the entry corridor. The memorial amphitheater is ADP two. The service complex, which really encompasses the entire cemetery, and the Meeks Tanner area, which is near Arlington House. A fifth area is the Soldiers and Airmen's Home National Cemetery, which is located within the District of Columbia. It's included under planned as it is under ANC's purview and maintenance. As we shared in the draft review and preparing the master plan, ANC undertook a thorough process to identify problems and challenges, particularly related to the visitor experience and pedestrian safety, as well as addressing pedestrian and vehicle conflict conflicts. In the final master plan, identified projects are notional in nature with potential locations included in specific ADPs. I note that individual projects identified in this final master plan will be designed at the individual project stage and submitted for commission review and approval, and that the applicant has committed to work with the review agencies for early coordination during the early design phases of each individual project. The first area we'll look at is ADP one, which is the entry corridor area. And this area includes the memorial amphitheater, excuse me, Memorial Avenue, the Welcome Center, the WMSA Memorial, the visitor parking garage, and the administration building. Most of the proposed future projects involving new structures are located in ADP one and include projects to address pedestrian and vehicle conflicts and enhancing the visitor experience. It also includes security related projects, such as a new standalone pedestrian security facility to the east of the Welcome Center and a new vehicle screening facilities, both along Memorial Avenue and at the visitor parking garage. For ADP one, staff finds that the new visitor screening facility adjacent to the Welcome Center will allow the Welcome Center to better function as a place for visitors to seek information and orientation to the cemetery. In addition, staff finds that the proposed mobile vehicular screening facility on Memorial Avenue will be designed in such a way by the applicant as to minimize visual impacts while meeting their mission goals. However, as I mentioned earlier, the remaining issue in the plan relates to an identified flex space north of Memorial Avenue. The areas north and south of Memorial Avenue behind the holly hedges, excuse me, holly hedgerows, which also include oak groves, are documented contributing landscape features for the larger National Register Historic District for Arlington Memorial Bridge and Environments, which includes the Memorial Avenue area. For the final master plan submitted, the applicant has indicated that for any possible projects that may be identified in the potential flex space north of Memorial Avenue, they will ensure any development has minimal impacts to the mature oaks and remain lower than the hedgerows. While staff appreciates the efforts of the applicant to commit to avoiding impacts to these landscape features, there is not enough information provided at this time in order to recommend approval as part of the master plan's potential projects in this area. Therefore, staff recommends that the commission defers action on the ADP one area identified as flex space north of Memorial Avenue due to the potential impacts to historic landscape resources and view sheds in this area. In addition, staff requests when additional spaces needed prior to site selection for any new development, the applicant provide a greater analysis of other possible flex space areas throughout the cemetery and will include an analysis of potential impacts to any historic landscape features and view sheds. Finally, staff notes that if the identified area north of Memorial Avenue in this plan is determined to be the most suitable for future flex space development, including possible columbaria, the design will need to be sensitive to the identified historic landscape features and view sheds. The next ADP we'll look at is ADP two, which is the memorial amphitheater. ADP two, which covers an area in the southwestern part of the cemetery. It contains the memorial amphitheater, given that it's name, and its reception building, the tomb of the unknown soldier, considerable burial space, particularly to the south and west of Memorial Amphitheater, and the ground surrounding the amphitheater. Proposed projects in ADP two are primarily to improve access and the visitor experience. Therefore, staff finds the projects at the memorial amphitheater will improve amphitheater accessibility, interior space functionality, and pedestrian circulation and wayfinding. Next is the service complex. And as I mentioned, this area for the service complex spans the entire cemetery. In response to the commission's request at the draft review, the applicant has committed to preserve historical view sheds and will ensure that any new areas for service functions and lay down areas are not located within cemetery areas with sensitive view sheds or adjacent to burials or graves. The next ADP is ADP four, which is the Meeks Tanner ADP located in the northwest portion of the cemetery. It lies west of the President John F. Kennedy grave site and Arlington House, both primary guest destinations to the cemetery. For ADP four, the master plan includes opportunities to improve the visitor experience and safety with wayfinding, improved sidewalk access, expanded tram stops, and traffic improvements. As requested by the commission at the draft review, the applicant has committed to continued coordination with the National Park Service at monthly meetings between ANC and the NPS superintendent regarding any strategies to address pedestrian safety and desired new walkways in the areas adjacent to Arlington House. Finally, in respect to transportation needs, under this plan, staff finds that the applicant has committed to continue to improve staff finds that the applicant has committed to continue to improve the transportation safety and service for their visitors to the ANC. In conclusion, staff recommends that the Commission approves the final real property master plan for the Arlington National Cemetery that defers action on the ADP 1 area identified as flex space north of Memorial Avenue due to the potential impacts to historic landscape resources and view sheds in this area. This concludes my presentation, and as I've incorporated the recommendations into my presentation, I will not repeat them here. I am joined by ANC's Colonel Thomas Austin and Agnes Sullivan, and we're all here to answer any questions the Commission may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Do commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Wright.
Oh.
I saw you. I didn't, I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
That's right. I do have a question. Why don't we have enough information on the flex space?
They just had not included it. They knew there's an opportunity because of where it is. And right now it's open, but that's why it's identified as a long-range project. Is like, I think, number 10 of their potential projects in ADP 2. That's why we feel like when they need to look for additional space for any development, they need to do a more thorough analysis of where it's appropriate.
So, so would a deferment then give the green light for the rest of it, but say, hold on before you touch the flex space and that, and leave it at that?
Correct, yes.
Because it's, we're, we're, we're doing. Master plans are supposed to consider a window of 20-plus years, so that's why I'm asking. It seems, I mean, so is this, is it, is, or is this deferral likely to extend past, you know, 20, 40-something?
I, I don't know how far they just have identified that as a future project. I may let them respond to that.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from them, please.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Wright.
Thank you.
This is Agnes Sullivan. I am the Deputy Director of Engineering here at Arlington National Cemetery. And I did want to respond that we have just received the transfer of that property. So before the year 2020, that property did not, did not belong to Arlington National Cemetery. So it was never considered as any space except for National Park Service space. So once the land was transferred to Arlington National Cemetery, we looked at it and said, hey, this could be a potential columbaria, or it could be a potential, and that's why we didn't actually identify it as a single purpose, but as flex space. Like, it's, it's a piece of land, it's about 1.6 acres that could be used for interments. We're not sure because we know that there's a big utility corridor going through that area. So we're not even sure about the viability. And before we can do that, we would have to do some sort of major planning. And that is exactly when we would reengage with NCPC if we started looking at that planning. So right now on our master plan, we just identified it as a box with a potential. But no plans that as of now, and, and like I said, we, we've just received the property through the NDAA, the 2020 NDAA, so we've actually only had possession of the land for two years. Over.
Commissioner Wright, did that answer your question? I know in the EDR we talk about deferring action on that.
Yeah, yeah. And if, and if we, if we weren't, I would suggest that because with all due respect, the transfer had to have been in the works for a long time. It would have probably been smarter just to leave it out. Yeah, it, it, rather than say, because it's, it's just a big flashing red warning, morning light. When you flex space is, is probably not something that a master plan would would include. I mean, it's too mysterious. That's all I'm saying. So I think the staff report is, is just right.
I think it serves as a good reminder to keep an eye on that. So, thank you. Commissioner May, I think I saw you raise your hand. Did you have a question?
I do, yeah. I'm hoping for more of an explanation of what the mobile screening facility is imagined to be. Because I think one of the biggest reasons why we were concerned about this transfer dating back to 2020 and well before that.
Well before, yeah.
Is the, is the prospect that there could be, is the prospect of what could be done within the avenue itself. So can you explain, you can, you know, either you or Miss Sullivan, could you explain what's, what you imagine this mobile screening facility could be?
Agnes, my understanding is right now there really has not been any pre-design of it. You just know how it should function in an ideal location, but if you will just elaborate on that?
Yes, sir. So before the land transfer in 2020, we had a memorandum of understanding and agreement, I forget which one, between Arlington National Cemetery and National Park Service that allowed us to have an existing mobile screening facility. And that, that screening facility, it, it, it doesn't look very attractive and it's not very honorific. And we would like to develop something that is a little bit more in keeping with the architecture and the, the hallowed grounds of the cemetery. We have not done any planning to that effect because again, this area did not belong to us. And it is difficult for us to spend any planning dollars for an area that technically was not in our possession. So we have refrained from doing that, although we have requested funds to do that in the future. We have requested planning dollars to develop concepts that we're hoping that we can share and show you in the future. Over.
Okay, so that doesn't really tell me anything at all. Can you tell me something about how it will function, right? Because I know how it used to function, and I know even though it was not necessarily attractive, it was also quite minimal, right? It was not, it did not involve any kind of structure that got rolled out there or anything like that. So can you tell me how it would function? What the functions are that you're intending to have there? I mean, are you going to have, you know, an air-conditioned space for guards to stand in? Are you going to have drop-down ballards or, or the soccer barriers? I mean, what are you, what are you imagining this thing to be? Is it just a checkpoint? So you need to have a place where somebody can stand in, in the shade, much like it is now? So what, what's the functional improvement that you're looking for?
Our current functions, we have to try to balance what DOD would like us to do versus what our mission is, which is to be an active cemetery and get folk in and to their visiting and doing services for every hour, six times a day. So it's, it's a balancing act. Unfortunately, I'm not a security expert and we have not gone into those deep discussions. We just know that the existing system that is out there, we just don't think is in keeping with the the architecture and the nature of how the cemetery should run. So we would like to go back, do some planning, look at past functions and architecture and landscaping of Arlington National and Memorial Avenue and do that deep dive. But that has not been done yet because that is part of the appropriation that we've requested to do planning for all of ADP 1 and come up with those concepts. So a lot of comments were brought up during the visit that we found super helpful. And we are planning on incorporating all those comments. And we have not actually looked at limiting our thoughts or into one pigeonhole just yet. We have, we're actually so open to ideas that we're excited about developing in the future.
Thank you.
Hey, hey.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan.
Continue on this for just a second.
Sure. I just saw that Commissioner McMahon raised his hand. I didn't know if he wanted to add to this discussion or add some.
Do you have any answer? Do you have answers for me?
No, I don't have answers for you.
Okay.
I do have a question, which may. If I recall from the brief, and of course I'm trying to bring it up on the computer and it's not working well, I hope you guys can hear me. But I'm, I'm struck by the, the word in the brief that said mobiles. So I would, you know, what I'm hearing is some kind of perhaps permanent screening facility. So I think that's something that's got to be addressed. And perhaps, well, I don't think it'd be handled just like the columbarium because security is required. But I think we, we need to note how that screening location is called out in, in the presentation. And for any ANC users, they come back to us with their vision of what that's going to look like. Over.
Well, that's exactly what I was concerned about. What I was trying to understand is what do you mean by mobile, right? So is it, is it, it's something that can be rolled out of the way?
What's the program? Yeah, what's the program for?
If, if need be, right?
So the current plan is to have a mobile screening facility, which is to have it be removable. Yes.
Okay. And are you, I mean, other than things that might be necessary to, you know, like an electrical conduit or connection or things like that, are you actually going to be thinking that you're planting stuff in the ground?
That is an option. Currently, we do have a portable generator there that we don't think is very sustainable because it does get hot in, you know, the summer, so there, the.
Well, I understand the need for electricity and putting stuff underground, no big deal, right? It's the question of whether you're planning to plant barriers or foundations for buildings, things like that. That's the kind of thing that I was curious about. But you, it doesn't sound like you've gotten very far in thinking that through.
Yeah, we have not, we've not done any planning on that.
Yeah, okay, all right. I'll leave my, rest of my comments for when we're deliberating.
But it sounds like we'll want to hear more when that planning really commences and we can understand the distinction that you're trying to describe there, Ms. Sullivan. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Webb or Ms. Sullivan from Commissioners? Commissioner Cash?
Yeah, I just wanted to not spend too much more time on the mobile facility. But one thought that I had when we were out there, and I continue to have this thought, is why do we really need to have a facility, a screening facility there? And that then begs the question, why do you need to have any vehicular traffic down that far on Memorial Avenue? And if you're now going to, if we're going to approve or be supportive of the new main vehicle security screening that's going to go down to the, the garage, it seems to me there's a road network that could get those same vehicles to where they need to be for any staging for the various services and everything. So I'm just wondering, I guess my question would be, are you all confident in your assessment that this additional screening facility is so needed that we'd be looking at putting even a temporary facility there or a movable facility? Or have you examined if there's any way to integrate the new vehicular screening area for the general public and see if you can't just tie it to the network and if that would have less of an impact than kind of playing, playing around with Memorial Avenue?
So Commissioner Cash, I'm really happy that you brought that up because that is one of the things that we are looking at is as we do a screening facility for visitors, is there a way to also apply that screening facility for funeral attendees and general staff? So that is one of the items that we'll be looking at because we do have an alternate road that could get you into Arlington National Cemetery from the parking garage. We just don't know what the realm of possibility and the capacity of those roads are as compared to the traffic. So part of the planning that we are going to do and when we develop some concepts is to do a traffic study to see if that is possible. But I didn't want to make any promises like that mobile screening facility is going away when I can't prove that yet.
I, I would really appreciate that, looking at that moving forward before we finalize anything like that. I mean, I'm just looking at the map here. So I think we're already giving up a little bit by having this, the regular visitor screening facility because it impacts all those folks that are walking back and forth from the metro. But I'd like, if we're going to go with that route, I'd like to try and see whatever we can do to preserve Memorial Avenue. So I think this is a real opportunity for Memorial Avenue to also be transformed into something that's more pedestrian-friendly, especially now that we're moving more people down towards the visitor center and just kind of reimagine that like we did in front of the White House. It's just less of a roadway and more of a pedestrian zone, especially for all the tourists there. So any work you can continue to do on that and see if there's a way to mitigate this would be great.
Thank you, Commissioner Cash. Are there any other questions?
I'm sure I didn't. One other new question. And, and this is really for Mr. Webb, maybe he knows the answer to this. But whatever the, the work is that happens here, is this subject to Commission of Fine Arts review? Because I know that our work in Arlington House is subject to CFA review.
Yes, my understanding, once the actual, the, the project design, CFA will be involved in those coordination meetings and as a consulting party. Yes.
And as, and as a consulting party.
Yes, correct.
But, but also for formal commission reviews, not just, not just as a CP.
And Ms. Sullivan, that is correct. I think that was, yeah.
Yes, we, we always consult with CFA when it comes to anything, even a tree plaque at Arlington National Cemetery. We submit that for approval to CFA.
I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other questions, we do have one person signed up to speak, Laura Moore, on behalf of the Guild of Professional Tour Guides. Ms. Moore, you will have five minutes to provide your testimony. Welcome.
Hi, I think I'm on now.
Yes, thank you.
Really appreciate it in this presentation as well. Yes, I'm speaking on behalf of the Guild of Professional Tour Guides of Washington DC, which I think some of you know is our professional association. About 500 licensed DC guides and affiliated tour operators. As for myself, I've been a licensed DC tour guide since 2010. So I have had the honor of leading thousands of visitors each year, each year to and through the cemetery. And it's really not an exaggeration to say that this is one of the really greatest honors of my professional life to have the privilege of introducing this special place to visitors of so many backgrounds, from so many places, so many different ages, lots of school groups, but also a lot of adult and senior citizen groups as well. It's hard to find the words to describe the meaning these visits hold for, just as an example, a 13-year-old girl thinking of her brother stationed in Afghanistan as she participated in a replaying ceremony at the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier. That's just one of thousands of examples that my colleagues and I could, could share with you. The majority of visitors who walk through the cemetery are part of the kinds of tour groups that guides work with. The Guild also liaises with, with the tour operators who plan the tours as well as the motor coach operators that carry them. So we do consider ourselves a key stakeholder and also an important resource. We are here to help. We're also very aware of the need for revamping that entry area and security and improving visitor flow and accessibility. So we were really pleased to see that the master plan tackles these issues, highlights the goal of enhancing the visitor experience in particular, even as we understand always that the overarching mission of the cemetery is to honor those who are interred there. That's a message that we share with our groups as well. We especially support separating the Welcome Center function from the security function and increasing visitor amenities, especially restrooms. Guides are obsessed with restrooms. We're also taken with the pedestrian nodes idea to paraphrase the master plan, pausing, regrouping, and pivoting to the next point of exploration is actually a pretty good description of a lot of our job as well. Reading the master plan, we do find ourselves with some questions and concerns that we did want to share. And we look forward to discussing them further with Ms. Sullivan and the Arlington Cemetery team. For example, the master plan mentions self-guided tours using the ANC Explorer app and addresses visitors arriving at nodes or points on the tram. But we don't see any specific mention of tour groups who, again, make up the bulk of the pedestrian traffic through the cemetery, especially during the busy season. And groups, tour groups have particular needs that are different from those of individuals guiding themselves, including making space together to speak with the group without impinging on graves or other. Um, without impinging on graves or other hallowed areas. Um, that's what we see the flex spaces for. Uh, we are most concerned, however, uh, with changes that might increase the time it takes groups to get through security and into and through the cemetery. Or that might lead to crowding and congestion at entry points. Um, there are a lot of factors on our tours that are are out of our hands as tour guides, traffic, broken down buses, street closures. I'm thinking about the Army Ten Miler this Sunday when I'm meeting a group there, and groups have very, very tight schedules as well, uh, which we have no control over. Um, during this busy spring tourist season, motor coaches line up all the way down Memorial Drive before the 8:00 AM opening. And the bus parking area frequently fills up before 9:00 AM, sometimes well before 9:00 AM. Meanwhile, at any given time in the morning, there could be, you know, 20 guides waiting outside the Welcome Center for their group's buses to arrive. 20 guides equates to 1,000 visitors approximately. Um, so with motor coaches having to go through the vehicular screening, we are concerned that the crowding at the vehicle entrance will worsen. And also would want to be sure there is a safe way for coaches to drop off passengers. And for the passengers to meet their guides when they're not able to park. Um, I also wanted to note that tour guides arrive as pedestrians. Um, but then we meet our groups arriving by vehicle by motor coach. So separating pedestrian vehicle access could be problematic. So we're wondering, do passengers go through additional screening after the bus drops them off? Where will guides meet them? Um, so in short, we worry about additional hurdles that may be added to entry into the cemetery um and flow through the cemetery. Um, an added layer of security, um, if it's poorly designed or implemented, could be the difference between a school group making their replay time. Um, and those times are non-negotiable, um, or even seeing the changing of the guard at all. But even with the current security and flow, we often struggle to get our groups to the tomb on time. Uh, we know from our years of experience that a visit to the cemetery witnessing the changing of the guard, and especially when that visits includes a replay. Is the highlight of a school trip to Washington. And for the reef layers, those four reef layers, it happens once in a lifetime. Um, so in short, we bring experienced, on-the-ground, practical experience to these matters. Again, we are here to help.
Five minutes.
Um, thanks, I'm wrapping up. Um, we really want to help the cemetery in its mission while providing the most meaningful experience to our visitors. And I did want to say, I I understand that a lot of this is notional, um, but we really look forward to continuing these conversations as the implementation. Um, and that goes forward. Um, again, these visits of these groups are an opportunity of a lifetime. Um, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Moore, for those thoughtful and very practical comments based on your experience. I'm sure they're appreciated by the planners. Um, does the Commission have any questions about Ms. Moore's testimony? Uh, seeing, hearing none, that concludes the public testimony on this proposal, and I will now open it up to Commission for discussion. Could everyone please turn on their cameras? I will start with Commissioner McMahon and then go in a round robin format. Uh, please keep your webcams on during the discussion. Uh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Davis, did you have a question?
Uh, no, I did not.
Okay, I just saw the hand, so um, thank you. Commissioner McMahon?
Chair White, uh, no, it's I have nothing else to add besides my earlier comments. I think there's a a good conversation to be had concerning uh. Guidance on that uh mobile screening center. I understand a view shed issues dealing with that. Um, and so perhaps we'll discuss that with, as we go around with the other uh commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner May?
Uh, yes, um, so first of all, I want to say, you know, we appreciate the ongoing coordination um between the century and the Park Superintendent, the regular meetings. Um, to resolve any issues that that arise. As far as I know, they're they're, you know, things are going well. I haven't heard. Uh, you know, any concerns coming from the superintendent's office. Um, but that is an important thing, and it has to uh remain ongoing. The um, I am very glad to see that the 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 second director is recommending that uh ADP1, that that flex space. Is not uh going to be part of the approval here, and that'll be held off until further planning is done. I, you know, I have to say frankly, the right thing to do uh would be to simply eliminate that the possibility of flex space there because I don't see any room for flex. Um, it is, I I think that the, you know, if anything happens there should be a full restoration of the. The rows of trees that were part of the original design, and I don't think that that affords an opportunity to do columbarium or burials or anything else, frankly. Um, but uh, that's, uh, I guess we'll take that up when uh, when the uh ANC is prepared to or has done more. Of the necessary planning on their part to to. To consider what they could do, and maybe they'll come to the same conclusion that I have. Um, and then uh, the regarding the mobile screening facility, um, I I really appreciate uh Christian Cash's comment about. Uh, the possibility that it might not be necessary, that that this could be something that um is essentially incorporated into the other screening facility in some form. Uh, and I think that would be a a terrific way to handle it and opening it up to a a more pedestrian activity, I think, would be very good. But I think most importantly, simply having that broad avenue uh the way it was designed. Uh, and not cluttered up with the kind of security um stuff that we seem to stick. In public spaces without sufficient regard for the, you know, the impact on on people's experience. So um. I, you know, I I get a little concerned when we start talking about the architecture of what that mobile screening facility would be because that implies that it's a building. And uh, I know I didn't hear that specifically that they're talking about putting in a building, but a building is completely out of the question. And if it is, if there is going to be anything there in terms of mobile screening facility, it should be something that is very mobile. Right? Something that that you can take away at the drop of a hat. Because anything more than that, it's just going to wind up sitting there, and it will be part of everybody's experience on a regular basis. So something, you know, whatever is done there, maybe it has to be different from what's there now, but it should be kept to the absolute minimum. And it should be something that could go away very quickly, and in fact, probably should go away, you know, whenever the cemetery is not open for public visitation. So, and that, you know, including evenings and things like that. So. Um, those are my thoughts on this. Otherwise, I, you know, I I appreciate the staff report and I'm prepared to vote in favor of the EDR.
Thank you, Commissioner May. Commissioner Argo? Commissioner Argo, you're on you.
Yes, I am. And now I'm off video. Okay, let's get it together. There we go. Um, I appreciate the presentation and um. And I I don't have any additional comments. Um, I'm particularly interested in aligning. My comments with those made by uh just made by Commissioner May. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright?
I don't have any further comments or questions either. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Dixon?
I'm fine, and thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash?
Uh, nothing further. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
I know additional comments for me too. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Ginsburg.
No comments. Thank you.
And Commissioner Kozart?
Uh, thank you. No comments.
Thank you. Well, I I would just add, um. You know, there's always such a thoughtful discussion on these uh master plan reviews, and we think this is basically a good master plan. And I think the improvements around the visitor center, as we've heard from others, will make for a better experience. And, you know, clearly, we look forward to working with you on additional analysis and discussion about that flex space in the future. And uh, we certainly understand the need and the challenges that you have at the cemetery in finding space for what you need to achieve there. We just want to make sure the solution is the least impactful to the historic landscape features and view sheds, which has been stated today. So thank you also for hosting the Commission on a tour. It was very helpful um for everyone to see. What you're trying to accomplish there and how it operates. So we look forward to seeing further submissions from you. And um, appreciate you being here and and answering all of our questions today. So if there are no further comments or questions, is there a motion to approve the preliminary and final site and building plans?
So moved.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Cash. Ms. Costa, can you please confirm the motion in a second and take the vote by roll call?
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner McMahon made the motion, and it was seconded by Commissioner Cash. With that, Commissioner Kozart?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Chair White?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Upstain.
You and Commissioner Ginsburg?
Upstain.
Thank you. The motion has carried. Next is Agenda Item 6D for the Approval of Comments on the Draft Master Plan for the George Bush Center for Intelligence, and we will be hearing from Mr. Hart.
Hopefully, everyone can hear me.
Yes, and we can see it.
Excellent. Good after, uh, good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. The US government has submitted the George Bush Center for Intelligence Draft Master Plan for comments by the Commission. This campus is located in Fairfax County, Virginia, just south of the Potomac River. It was last before the uh before the Commission, um, and it was updated and approved by the Commission in 2006. As a overview, the Commission's review of draft master plans focuses on a few concerns. Um, these are listed here regarding land use, transportation, and environmental protection, as well as historic preservation. These are some of the questions uh that we ask as we consider these uh this master plan. Here's an aerial photograph. Um, this installation is highlighted in yellow, and the main features um on the installation is the main headquarters building, which is um shown here. Um, and this was originally opened in 1962. Uh, I'll note that the main point of access to the installation are from the south along Route 123 and from the north along uh George Washington Memorial Parkway. The existing installation plan is shown here in a bit more detail. You can see the main buildings on the campus, uh, as well as the, uh, which are um the dark color, which um, uh, as well as the. Parking areas, which are shown here in the lighter gray color. The main focus of the master plan is to modernize the office space and provide a safer, more enjoyable experience for campus employees and visitors. Over the next few slides, I'll describe the existing land use, historic resources, topography, what, what, excuse me, woodlands, streams, and circulation. Following that, I'll show the proposed um uh development, including included in the master plan. So the existing land uses are um shown here. Um, and you'll notice that most of this area is um owned by the federal government, which is this kind of. Uh, light blue or purple color. Um, and uh, there are several different entities, the George Washington Memorial Parkway. Um, and the, which is overseen by the National Park Service and the Fair Turner Fairbanks Highway Research Center, which is overseen by the um Federal Highway Administration. Also included here are residential areas, which are to the east and to the south, uh, and these are located, these are indicated with a um a peach color. Next, we see some historic resources on campus. Um, I'd like to point out that the original headquarters building and uh the auditorium dome uh here in the northern part of the campus. Um, were built in 1961 and opened in 1962. Um, I'll also note that the Scattergood Thorn House, which is a 1926 Georgian revival house. Is located on the southern portion of the installation. It is actually the oldest building on the on the campus. And as a note, the Margaret Scattergood, excuse me, as a note, Margaret Scattergood and Florence Thorn own the house. And were very influential in the American Federation of Labor in the early to mid 20th century. So here are some um topographic changes on the installation. Um, there are steep slopes on the north and east of the installation. Um, there are some other steep slopes which are indicated with this kind of orange brown color uh throughout different parts of the installation as well. Now we see some uh main landscapes on the uh on the installation. Um, there are um woodlands which are shown here on the uh again, northern and and eastern portion of the installation. Um, and throughout the rest of the installation is a maintained landscape and some other woodland preservation areas. We see some streams and wetlands on the in insulation as well. Mainly, these are are in the northern and eastern portion of the uh campus. Um, these areas will be, will not be disturbed as part of this master plan. And finally, uh, this map is the current uh campus circulation plan with installation entrances. Uh, as I noted earlier, the entrance from 123 is shown here. The entrance from GW, um, George Washington, George Washington Memorial Parkway from the north is shown here. I'll also note that there are entrances all entrances along um. Uh Colonial Farm Road, which are shown here on the west. There is a loop road that's uh shown here as well. Um, and there are some paved areas and some parking um garages uh surrounding uh that that loop road area. Um, and I'll note that there's a, there is some parking that's outside this loop road area, um, and it has the potential to cause vehicular pedestrian conflicts. So the installation um is not a very pedestrian friendly. So, um, we get to the draft master plan itself. This has a um 20-year outlook and includes a number of goals. Um, they are addressing um. Uh, unsatisfied mission needs, identifying areas for new development on the campus, recapitalization to support sustainable goals. Um, by improving stormwater management and reducing impervious service area on the campus to develop a um rational plan to address future needs. This is the uh, an overview um of the plan which identifies campus development sectors. Uh, the campus gateway, which is this area here, um, is the main entrance for visitors and employees. The um northeast and north um sectors are where the main headquarters building is located. There is um a new parking that's being uh planned here uh that will will replace the um existing surface parking areas. The campus center, um, which is this kind of brown area here, is a new amenity for the campus that incorporates outdoor space for employees. With a water feature that doubles as a stormwater management facility. Campus support um is located here on the west, is an area for back office components that support the rest of the installation. Also included here would be um additional um parking structures that will will replace existing uh surface parking areas. And finally, the south campus um shown here in orange, excuse me, in green, is identified as an area for consolidated development. Um, and uh, and um a a new child development center. The master plan will include pedestrian amenities such as new pathways, sidewalks, plazas, and memorial features to make the installation a more inviting, safer pedestrian experience. Also included in the master plan are sustainable elements such as rooftop solar panels on all of the parking structures. Um, electric charging stations for um charging electric cars in the uh the the parking structures and stormwater management facilities. Um, throughout uh different parts of the installation to uh help with the stormwater management. Staff has reviewed the full master plan and recommends that the Commission support the uh George Bush Campus for Intelligence Draft Master Plan. Which describes a comprehensive vision for this campus located in Fairfax County. By providing a more orderly campus development while modernizing the office space. Removing temporary office space additions at the historic original headquarters building and creating a new southern precinct for additional development. Also protecting the natural resources by maintaining existing forested areas. Improving stormwater management through the introduction of management ponds and reducing impervious surface area by 10% or 26 acres. Which the, which um with the removal of existing surface parking lots and replacing them with with structured parking. Also improving sustainable development by installing rooftop solar panels for the parking garages and providing electric vehicle charging stations on campus. And finally, introducing pedestrian sidewalks, pathways, and outdoor spaces, which will improve the on-campus pedestrian safety. And provide pleasant spaces outside for employees to enjoy and learn about the agency's history. Staff has also uh three other recommendations for the applicant. Um, one to demonstrate how the parking ratio of one to two will be achieved when submitting the parking garages uh in the future. The second is to submit a detailed tree replacement plan with the final master plan. And the third is to include. And the third is to include design guidelines for the proposed childcare center, which will be in close proximity to the historic Scattergood Thorn House with the final master plan. And it is with that that the Commission supports this campus draft master plan. And as I've actually gone through this already, I'm not going to repeat it here. I am available to answer questions and with that, I'd like to conclude my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. In the interest of time, I know we have a long agenda today. I'll ask if the commissioners have any comments on the project. Hearing no comments. Thank you, Mr. Hart, for the presentation. And I just want to state, we appreciate the attention that the applicant is bringing to sustainability, employee amenities, and the new development as it relates to the historic center building. It's also really great to see the removal of so much surface parking and pavement in general. And I know there's indications that the parking structures will have a solar canopy, which is always really great to see. So we strongly encourage you to build this into the project design. We're seeing this more and more at installations, and we think it's a really effective way to help achieve sustainability. So with that, is there a motion to approve the comments on the master plan?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner May, for seconding. Ms. Koster, can you please confirm the motion in the second and take the vote by roll call?
Certainly. The motion was made by Commissioner McMahon and the second was by Commissioner May. And with that, Commissioner Cozart?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon? Commissioner McMahon?
Looks frozen.
Yeah.
Commissioner McMahon, you're back.
Okay, yeah, my internet connection is unstable, but I vote yes.
Thank you. Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Chair White?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Upstain.
Thank you. And Commissioner Ginsburg?
Upstain.
All right. Thank you. The motion has carried. The last item on the agenda is an information presentation on the K Street Transit Way. We will be hearing from Mr. Wild. Welcome, Mr. Wild.
Thank you very much. Thank you and good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. Today, we have the District Department of Transportation here to present their most recent plans for a new transit way along a portion of the K Street corridor in northwest Washington DC. K Street serves as a major cross-town east-west connection across the city, extending through Washington DC's downtown area between Florida Avenue in the east and the Whitehurst Freeway on the west. The new transit way would transform an 11-block section of the K Street corridor between 12th and 21st Streets Northwest into a more formalized multimodal street, eliminating the existing service lanes and installing new separate bus and bicycle lanes, new landscaped medians, and replacing the general purpose lanes. Here is a close roadmap of the planned new transit way project area, which would pass by three National Park Service properties, Fergus Square, McPherson Square, and Franklin Park. The concept of the project started back in the 1990s with active planning initiated in the early 2000s, starting with the K Street Transit Way feasibility study. During the initial feasibility study, NCPC and the Downtown bid sponsored a two-and-a-half-day charrette to discuss the need to transform K Street into a grand urban boulevard with a number of defining characteristics that would include robust landscaping with a continuous tree canopy, minimal service functions, and a new street designed in an integrated manner from building to building face. For the past two years, DDOT has been designing the new multimodal K Street section with a 35% plan in 2020, a 65% design this past summer, and DDOT now has a 90% design which they will present to you here shortly. While NCPC does not have a direct review authority over the project based on its nature as a series of traditional streetscape improvements within the K Street right away, NCPC does have an interest based on our planning partnership with the district government as well as the project's adjacency to three National Park Service properties and the historic origins of the K Street corridor within the law and font plan. And one last note is that I will summarize our initial staff comments at the conclusion of DDOT's portion of today's presentation for Commission consideration and deliberation. And we will forward our guidance to DDOT in a letter, in addition to any other comments that we hear today from Commission members. So with that, I would like to now introduce Ms. Robin Jackson, who is Deputy Program Manager with DDOT's Infrastructure and Project Management Division. And she is the manager for the Transit Way Project's ongoing design and development. So with that, I will hand the presentation off to Ms. Jackson.
Good afternoon, everybody. Again, my name is Robin Jackson, Deputy Program Manager here at DDOT. Actually, the project manager is Wayne Wilson that many of you know. And he's joining us in the audience and I may invite him along for questions and answers if there are any after presentation. Next slide. Again, thank you all for inviting us for this information session. We're happy to come back out to the public and go over some items that may be of interest to how we progress from 60, 90%. I'll start by saying that a lot of our renderings, just seeing this presentation, are from previous presentations. So I'll talk through what is different from those renderings and what's in our design. A lot of the project background overview has been covered, so I'll go through those very quickly. Streetscape enhancement, we'll talk about the landscaping and the mini zones, opportunities for branding, transit improvement and operations, pedestrian and bicycle improvements, as well as next steps. Next slide, please. Next slide.
Oops, hold on. Okay.
Okay, so very quickly through the project background overview, next slide. Again, the project is from 21st to 12th Street along in downtown along K Street. We'll squeeze these for the sake of time. Next slide. And then, as Michael mentioned, from 2005, we started off with the transit way, pivoted to a streetcar in 2013, and now back to a transit way in 2022 is where we are now. This design process has been going on since 2019 to 2022 is when we've been in final design. Next. And so our typical view of the corridor, you'll notice that we'll have two transit lanes running down the center, two bicycle lanes that are adjacent to the transit lanes, and then four travel lanes. And then some blocks contain loading and parking where available, but most of it has been relocated to the side streets. Next slide, please. And these are the views at the park. The main difference here is you know that we do not have the center median, and this is mostly due to right-of-way constraints and not impacting National Park Service property. Next slide, please. So I'll go through streetscape enhancements. I want to reiterate that the scope here is from building face to building face. So we are replacing all of the sidewalk between the building base and the back of curve, except for areas that are permitted by building owners. We are replacing with London pavers, and I'll show you more what that'll look like. We have an amenity zone and a clear path zone that we're maintaining through here. And we understand that pedestrian experience is critical to the the economic health and success of the downtown area. Next slide, please. Okay, so the sidewalk zone, we're showing London pavers. And this is typical what you see through the downtown area. And this was also discussed with the bid, going through different materials with them and what we can do. And this is what we have landed on. And then we have this treatment amenities zone that's showing like these charcoal gray concrete pavers at a four-by-eight herringbone pattern. This is still being coordinated through the business side as regards to the shape or not the shape, the size of those pavers, just to be able to install amenities in the area that we're looking at. And so we have the diagram on the right side of the screen showing you where the sidewalk is, sidewalk zones are, and where the amenities zones are. Next slide, please. Here are some examples of what that looks like currently downtown. So here here in Connecticut Avenue, it's not exactly going to look like this. I just want to throw that out there, but I just want to show you how we're showing just the difference between the pavers, the London pavers, and then these are granite pavers. But we're going to do a pavement, a pavement section down in that amenity zone. So just showing you that there's a mini zone and that there's a sidewalk zone. And then the picture to the right is showing those London pavers at 1201 K Street. Here, you'll see the designer at that time picked, chose to do a variation of patterns and colors of shades of gray of London pavers, and that's something that's available that we're coordinating with the bids. And when I say bids, I mean golden triangle bid, downtown bid, as far as what features to include on K Street Transit Way. Next slide, please. I mentioned areas that we will not replace, and those are areas that are permitted. So at this time, we're showing you an example of what that looks like. So on Connecticut Avenue, you'll see specialty papers that a property owner chose to install and that is permitted for. And then also on 18A, 19K Street, you'll see an example of that as well of areas that are included specialty papers. So if it's if it's so decide that the bids choose to make this all consistency, though indeed, I'll be looking for it to the bids to leave that effort on our behalf. Next slide, please. So we're going to talk a little bit about the streetscape furniture out here. First, starting with these curvilinear benches. This came as a suggestion from a design report that we received from Downtown Bid as to kind of break up the angular feel of the corridor. So we introduced these curvilinear, curvilinear benches throughout the corridor. They're located in areas where we have these public art carpets that I'll talk to you about a little bit on the next slide. But the actual type of bench, you know, the materials and the shading of it is still being still being coordinated. But this is to give a design what this looks like, and we include a space for that. We do have our our pretty standard benches that we're including throughout the corridor and also the specialty bike racks that are being included along the corridor as well. Next slide, please. Okay. And so I mentioned the public art carpets. We have about nine locations throughout the corridor where we're showing these carpet pads. And this is for the bids or anyone to really program the space, include art and sculpture along the corridor. Right now, we're showing them along the sidewalks, 90% planned. But we are discussing actively about including them in the median as well. So it'll be art incorporated throughout the corridor of this project. We're showing an expanded tree box around the corridor. So we are expanding all of the tree boxes to the maximum possible, you know, say for a bench or a trash can that we run into. And then also, we're including our more decorative light fixtures along the corridor. And then the trash cans we're showing are opportunities for branding for the bits to include in their respective areas. Next slide. This is representative of the trees that we have scheduled. You can see them in the different seasons, spring and fall. This is what we're showing along the proposed street on for street trees along K Street. Next slide, please. And so now I'm going to switch to the medians and what it has, as we've included there. So I do want to point you so that the the illustration that you see here is highly illustrative and from previous concepts. But I do want to point out what we're actually doing out here. So we are removing existing, removing 121 existing trees. And that's mainly due to removal of the existing medians. And then we are proposing new trees, 174 trees. So we are increasing the number of trees out here on the corridor, net gain of 53 trees. And then also increasing the canopy, the current tree canopy that's out there, which contributes to the 40% tree canopy coverage by sustainable DC. So we are contributing to that goal with this project. The amount of green space that are that is being enhanced. So we have expanded tree pits of 8,000 square feet, green space that we're adding about 36,000 square feet, square feet, and the buyer retentions are 9,000 square feet. So all in all, we're adding upwards of 56,000 square feet of new green space along K Street Transit Way. And how it's described to me is if you take the whole south side of the sidewalk from the project limits and made that all green, that's how much green space we're actually adding to K Street itself. So just wanted to point that out to you guys. Next slide, please. Okay, here's what the typical medians look like, the planted medians look like at the areas where there we do not have bike lanes. We have these 18-foot-wide medians on either side that include trees and other plantings, fire retention on one side, regular planting on the other. And the buyer retention is due to meeting our stormwater capital goals for DC. Next slide, please. And here we are with the the illustration of where we include bike lanes here. And I see there's a layby in the middle, and we'll talk about that a little bit on the transit improvements as to why we have that there. And again, these are older drawings. We have updated that. The next slide, please. And so again, similar to what we've seen from no bike lanes, we have bike lanes here, fire retention on one side and planting on the other. Next slide, please. Here, we're showing representatives of the plantings that we will have out in the medians. So trees of of a pretty substantial size. Again, their canopy contributing to the increase of canopy coverage along K Street Transit Transit Way. And then also all the different median plantings, understory plantings along the Transit Way as well. Next slide, please. Okay. Factors that affect tree location, we've heard a lot about utilities and, you know, tree conflicts, not being able to place more trees out there due to those conflicts. The strong here is to kind of illustrate the amount of utilities that are along the corridor. We're just showing you lines here, but you can see we have telecom, we have electrical, we have gas, all kinds of utilities out here. We're not showing you the widths of these. I'm not showing you the depths of these. And so all it says is that DDOT is relocating utilities where we can, but there is little to no room to remove a lot of utilities. And so to get around that and to increase our tree canopy coverage, we've worked closely with our urban forestry division to evaluate tolerances from utility companies and really push those tolerances to make sure we can get as many trees in as possible and make sure that they are viable. And I think with that close coordination with the utilities and with our urban forestry division, we're able to get in a lot more trees than previously realized. Next slide, please. Okay, I'll go into our multimodal improvements for transit pedestrian bicycles. Next slide. Again, we want to provide safe, efficient travel for bus riders, cyclists, pedestrians, and motorists. And I'll go through some of the slides to show you how we're trying to achieve that. Next slide. Okay, so transit here for transit facilities, we have 11-foot-by-platforms, 10-inch curves for near-level boarding. The platforms are larded up to accommodate two articulated buses. They have granite curbs and the red detectable warning surfaces. And then the Port and Police Conference does have that variation between light gray and dark gray to tie into the sidewalks themselves. You'll notice that we're showing shelters here. But in our 90% plans, we actually are not showing shelters there. We show the space for them. We show powers, power for them. The shelters have been moved for to another phase of this project. Next slide, please. For transit improvement and access, accessible pedestrian signals will include areas for wayfinding at the sidewalks. We have median tips for protection of pedestrians and those detectable warn services and transit signals along the corridor where needed. Next slide. And here, I want to show a little bit about what's all happening with the buses and transit along the corridor. So we do have four new bus stops, 11 metro bus and circulator routes. And they're all coming in and out of the corridor in various locations. I do want to call your attention to 19th Street where we have four different bus lines that are meaning to exit the transit way. And then in different locations, there are folks willing to enter the transit way. But 19th Street, I'll call on that to bring up later. Next slide. Here, K Street Transitway is part of a larger bus downtown bus priority network. Our transit delivery division and Wamata have been in very close coordination with. Developing this network and K Street Transitway is the input into that bus priority network that's being planned. The different colors here that are active, K Street Transitway down the center, which is highlighted. That's in blue, eleven street northwest is an active project. And then what's complete are H and I street, those couplets there. And then the future you'll see at eighteenth and nineteenth Connecticut Avenue. Fourteenth street, thirteenth street. So you'll see a lot of future connections being planned for this area that will come online in. In in time and then the, you know, some of them waiting for K Street Transitway to come online before those get implemented. So you'll see. K Street is an input is an input to this bus party network. Next slide, please. Okay, for as far as transit operations goes. We do have one area now at nineteenth street where we're showing a left turn. So we were able to eliminate a left turn. At twenty first street only circulator was using that and they've now changed their operation so we could eliminate. That left turn and add more green space there at nineteen. That left turn is needed and they showed you the amount, the routes that need to exit the transit lane. At that intersection and this allows a more efficient bus operation. It moves those left turning buses out of the way of the through buses. Allows people to continue getting to destination. Then we're showing these laybys on on the bottom half of this. And so this is an older illustration. And in the ninety percent plans is not updated there either, but will be updated in the hundred percent design. Those laybys, those are not for bus pull offs. Those are for maintenance vehicles to access the platforms to service the platforms. And in the hundred percent design, you will see those laybys move more closely to the platforms. So that we're not breaking up the green space in between the platforms and these laybys. So there's only one layby at each one of the stop locations. And it's only wide enough for one vehicle will be wide enough for one vehicle and that's just a service vehicle. It's not for bus pull ins or pull off. Next slide. Pedestrian bicycle improvements along the corridor, high visibility crosswalks, improved sidewalks, protective bike lanes on one. On either side of the of the transit way. We have the two stage turn boxes. You'll notice that there are, we're showing less turn boxes from sixty five percent design to ninety percent design. This is in accordance with NACTO guidance to provide turn boxes at areas where we have either planned or existing. Bike lanes. We've also walked. Or sat down with lava and walked through the corridor intersection by intersection to really plan out where we have these. Turn boxes and actually what safety improvement needs to be incorporated into the project. To make sure that we're providing the best infrastructure for the bicycle improvements. We have high visibility cross crossing markings and then exclusive bike signals at areas where there's conflicts. Next slide, please. And so now I just want to show you some renderings. You may have seen this from the CFA presentation. We have the existing at thirteenth street looking east and then next slide. Is a rendering of that view shed again with the the transit way. Next slide, please. We have nineteen street looking west here existing and then the next slide. Will show you the rendering of the transit way. And again, those shelters are shown here now. But those we move to another phase of this project to allow for more discussion on those. Next slide, please. So now we'll go into next steps in our remaining timeline. So we are completing final design in December. We will have an additional public meeting between now and December to talk through the final design. And continue to meet with other stakeholders throughout. And then construction, we will begin in late summer, fall of twenty twenty three. Next slide. Okay, so our construction plan, we're still going through our phasing for construction. And we plan to have that developed at the end of the project and we do understand the sensitivities of, you know, the impacts to construction and trying to. You know, we visualize the downtown core and so that will be taken into consideration as we thoughtfully plan out. Our construction and phasing of that to reduce the impacts that property owners feel on the corridor. So we'll update people as we go along with with our D dot construction projects, construction updates and any traffic advisories. And then pedestrian access to businesses, residents across walks. Will always be prioritized and make sure that it's safe and easily accessible. And I believe that's the end of the presentation. Here for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Jack Jackson. And before we conclude today's presentation, we have several initial. Staff comments on the project that I just want to run through really quickly before we. Open it up to commission deliberation and these comments really are reflective of. Comments that we received from the Golden Triangle bid, the downtown bid and the Coalition for Smarter Growth. As some context, this project comes at a critical time. When the downtown area and other business districts are facing great uncertainty. With increasing rates of teleworking, consolidation of office space and a surge in office to residential conversions. And these factors will have long term implications for the K Street area. And in response, this project is an opportunity to recreate. K Street for the future as a truly great place where workers, visitors and residents can enjoy participating in urban life. So. Therefore, we encourage D dot to do everything possible to create a continuous tree canopy and robust landscaping. In as a new complete corridor or space, which not only includes a multimodal facility. But the sidewalk space should be included as part of a new linear park as envisioned in the two thousand four NCPC downtown bid. Charette and it sounds like the the project design is well underway to to achieving that goal. We urge the use of high quality streetscape materials, transit shelters and furnishings that would be consistent. With the new K Street design as a destination and premier civic space. While we do understand the project includes the replacement of some sidewalk pavers. The K Street reconstruction does present a once in a generation opportunity to not only reimagine the cartway space. Which the current project does, but the project should also reimagine the adjacent sidewalk space with the same boldness. And finally, we encourage D dot to continue working with the local bids, Commission of Fine Arts, NCPC. District Office of Planning and other stakeholders to ensure the project accomplishes its goal of transforming the city's downtown area. And with that, that concludes my presentation. Again, we have Ms. Jackson and two other D dot representatives with us here today. Who are available for questions and comments by the commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. While and thank you, Ms. Jackson. Do commissioners have any questions for either Mr. While or Ms. Jackson?
I had a couple of quick questions.
Great, thank you.
So can you gauge for me how all in Wamata is on this? Because a lot of the utility of this. Is really dependent on moving all those thirty buses off of H and I street and moving them up to K Street. So they are. Comfortable with location stops, the turn radiuses they need, all of that to essentially make a pretty big design shift in a couple of their routes.
Yes, they are. I mean, a lot of this was planned in coordination with Wamata and their needs, even the turn radius and what they need. And we're still in coordination with them on these things and addressing their comments from ninety percent, but they they're totally on board. Yeah.
That's helpful. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, I'll just comment, Ms. Jackson, I appreciate the thorough presentation and I was really struck by. The very colorful utility map that you shared and. Understanding some of the challenges you have and trying to accomplish all of these goals in the corridor. And at this time, I'd love to open it up for discussion. If everyone could please turn on your cameras. I'll start with Commissioner Cash, then we'll go in round robin format using our normal seating order. So Commissioner Cash, any further? Comments for just.
Just a few comments. So I just want to let you know that I mean, I I think that the downtown bid was, well, the downtown and gold triangle bids were pretty instrumental in kicking all this off. The idea that they're seeing essentially ninety percent and they're. Still have outstanding concerns or questions on collaboration. I would hope that you sit down with them to address those concerns because I think a lot of them are valid. Just as far as access to businesses and the recovery and all of that. So I would just hope that. That before a shovel goes in the ground that that you've got the bids on board because I think they're a really important partner and making sure this this gets off the ground. So that's comment number one. Comment number two, I appreciate the attention to the trees in the presentation and what the plans are for it. I know urban forestry is very thoughtful about this stuff, but I would really urge you all as much as you can when you're ripping out these old. Kind of nicely mature trees and getting ready to put new ones in. That you give a lot of attention, especially in the tree boxes that are going to be between the transit way and the travel lanes. Making sure you dig all that old crappy soil out of there. I mean, this is an opportunity. You're tearing up the road. They make some nice big tree boxes with fresh soil because I think that that a lot of the street trees that we have, the reason they don't last is because. We just pop a new tree into some pretty ugly dirt. So I just urge you to to work closely with urban forestry and make sure that we realize this is, yes, it's a transit way, but for a lot of people that live downtown, I have to be one of them. All those trees are just a really great amenity when you're walking down those wide sidewalks. I think the trees are just really important. And one other thing I just want to throw out there, I know, I don't know if you've gotten this far into the design yet, but. This is going to be a pretty complicated transit way when it comes to pedestrians, now bikes, now buses that are making left turns when other ones aren't. It seems like it's going to be a lot of pretty. Intricate signalization that you're going to have to do along here and the renderings that I've seen just seem to have like a little traffic like kind of like it has right now. But I imagine just like on the sixteenth street bus lanes, when you go up sixteen to you, there's these special now bus signals that look very different. And it looks like there's going to need to be a lot of complicated signalization. So as you're designing that, I'd really urge you to take into account. How that impacts the pedestrian experience, the safety for drivers, because I think that you could quickly, very quickly clutter up. The limited poles that you're going to have in this space. And just the last point I wanted to make with regard to my question on Wamata. I think that the Wamata involvement and consultation is incredibly important. We just, I know we just completed the sixteenth street bus lanes or not completed them, at least in downtown, we painted them. And a month later, other changes that the district has made with sixteenth street with Black Lives Matter Plaza has caused a bunch of rerouting. And now we have two or three blocks of red painted lanes going down sixteenth street to K Street that are not actually used by buses. So. To the extent that we get all that stuff programmatically figured out really on the front end so that we don't have. Things like stub lanes or something like that or have to go back and repaint a bunch of stuff. I just think that. Making sure we've got that down pat before we put shovels in the ground and complete this is just really. Important to make sure that we can get this off the ground as quickly as we can. So that's my thoughts, but thanks so much for the presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Cash. Commissioner Davis.
No additional comments from me. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Ginsburg.
Also no comments. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Kozart.
Yes, want to thank the the presenters and also thank our NCPC staff and just want to appreciate and align with the comments. That you made on this and appreciate you got for coming to share this on an informational basis. Also, we've at Office of Planning have heard from Golden Triangle Bid and Coalition for Smarter Growth. And downtown bid as well. And so in many ways, I think that's a signal of their both interests, but also offer of stewardship. Especially as it relates to the sidewalk areas. And while I I fully understand and appreciate. A big part of this and a big driver of this is what happens. Curb to curb, the sidewalk pieces are really important. So just encourage you to continue to think creatively about. How to make real the next steps and continued partnership with those bids. As you go forward, really, I'm just picking up on Commissioner Cash's comments about this. And I think in many ways, I I'm I'm. Our takeaway is that the current design really establishes a public realm that can accommodate those future enhancements. It's all about making real on the promise of that, right? And so appreciate that D dot has made space for that and and. Done nothing to curtail those opportunities. Now it's really about making sure that. Moving into construction is what happens curb to curb. There can be more of that conversation about. Kind of creative uses and and other things that can happen. Particularly in the sidewalk space and just appreciate and commend your ongoing work. It's a big balancing act like Chair White was saying, especially just with the utilities themselves. A big balancing act, appreciate the way you've. Expanded the design conversation to make sure we're really talking deeply about sustainability and bringing in all the voices. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner May.
Yeah, I don't have a lot of comments. I appreciate getting the update. I was wondering what was happening with this project because it's been. Ongoing for so long and has gone through many iterations and had various interactions with the park service. I do appreciate the fact that. The project will steer clear of any impacts on our squares downtown. Which is critically important from our perspective, but. I also appreciate the fact that, you know, something is finally moving forward and it's the emphasis is on. On people and moving people and hopefully. You know, you'll work through all of the remaining issues with the the bids and. Be able to to implement this project soon. It will, it will. It will be a transformative project. Hopefully it will all be for the good, but it will be transformative, no doubt about it.
Commissioner May. Commissioner McMahon.
Thank you. Appreciate D dot and staff's presentations today. Very interesting, a lot of work. I know reading the paper over the years has gotten into this concept. Looking forward to moving forward. I have no other comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Argo. You're on mute, Commissioner Argo.
Well, there you go. I appreciate the presentation and. And I'm excited about the about the possibilities and envisioning what this, to use that term again, that transformative. This transformative plan will look like. Thank you for sharing that with us. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright.
I have no comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon.
Let the transformer go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. Well, once again, Ms. Jackson, thank you so much for being here and thank you to you, you and your colleagues at D dot. And trying to work collaboratively with everyone to achieve a lot of different goals in that corridor. I think you heard people are are really focused on all the different details and, you know, I I. Particularly want to thank Commissioner Cash for bringing up something that is so. Simple, yet so important in terms of replacing the trees that everyone sees as a fixture. And just, you know, being mindful of all of those details and what that environment will be like. And I I also appreciate what Commissioner May said, the focus is on moving people. Not vehicles. So it's clear you're thinking through all those things and I know Commissioner Cozart is working very hard on this. With you because it's such a high priority. And I was particularly interested to see the iteration of ideas of what the mode, the dominant mode of transit would be through that corridor and what the the current thinking is. So. So with that, if are there any other comments or questions from the commission? If not, thank you again for the for the great presentation and the good staff work on this. This concludes our open session agenda. Our next regular commission meeting will be held on Thursday, November third. At one PM. And if there is no other business to come before the commission, the session is now adjourned.